Mr. Francisco, are we ready? I'm just trying to get the time. Okay. I call our city council workshop on Tuesday, December 12th, 2023 at 7:43. We will now have our citizen comment, and your citizen comments must be on workshop agenda items. You have four minutes. Counselor, if you would like to speak, you have one minute. We're going to start off with Mr. Leo Gukhaisen. Good evening, sir. You have four minutes. Good evening.
DS23-120, discuss posting of rules of decorum. When those are going to be posted, are they both for the gallery and the council itself? Because I'm standing here and I'm talking about my personal observations, not anybody else's but mine. When people up here are standing there and addressing you with their time, some parts of the body are doing other things, like side conversations, checking out cell phones, eating, you know. This has been going on for a while where it seems, and I didn't mention it earlier, but the gaslighting effect where we're pending one side against the other. The bottom line is both sides have the right to disagree. We all have that right. But both sides need to respect each other's opinion on a matter. If you're expecting the chamber person, the people in the chamber, to respect you as a body, then you as the body should respect them because they put you in the position you're in now. They voted for you, or people had voted for you to put you up here. There's a lot of articles in the paper, but I think the bottom line is if both sides respect each other, that will solve a lot of the problems that happen. Because you can't have it where one side thinks that they're better than the other side. We have to have respect. And there's a good book out that I read recently. It's called 1984. Okay? If you haven't read it, I'm not an Oprah Book Club person, but get it and read it because a lot of the things that we are seeing around here are in this book. And it doesn't end well for anybody. We need to respect each other. As people, people need to respect your authority that you have as a council, but yet you also need to respect the citizen for their responsibilities as well. Because, you know, you can't, I don't want to use the word dictate, but you can't force your opinions on other people and expect them to turn around and respect you. Just like, it goes both ways. It's not just one side, it's both ways. But if we take the time and respect each other as human beings, I think that a lot of this gaslighting and bickering that's going on could resolve itself with just a little respect from both sides. That's all I'm asking and saying, is respect. Aretha Franklin said it the best. Respect. That's all we need. I think we were all raised that way to respect one another. Like, and like I said, I might not agree with something that you're all doing, you might not agree with what I'm saying up here, but I respect you and I'm hoping that I get the same respect back as a person. Thank you.
Well said, Mr. Gukhaisen. Well said. And thank you. Mr. Forino? Welcome back. You have four minutes.
On the quarterly financials, we have shrinking sales tax again, which for years, plural, I have stated that where are the businesses that we can actually work at? We have car washes, as Dr. Cochran has often cited recently, tattoo shops, vape shops. We have everything retail. Name me one company within the city limits of Colleen that people would want to be hired to retire from. All these financials, okay, this will relate to comments I'll make afterwards in the meeting. We pay the city manager $275,000. We also, on workshop nights, have budgeted food out of our pockets that we pay for for you. Can't come up with money from Moss Rose, but we can come up with money for feeding you folks. In your private endeavors, you do more than well than most of us. We have a shrinking economy. There's no businesses in this town. We're a suburb without a city. I get that quote from a YouTube video. If you haven't seen it, look it up. It's a pretty strong indictment on what has been created in this town over the last 30-plus years. Yeah, we've got lots of places to live, grand plans for Dave and Buster's and all this other stuff, plenty of places for people to spend money, disposable income that we're not earning. Rising tide raises all ships. When it comes to the quarterly financials, we talk about people getting permits to put additions on their houses, new roofs, whatever else. You know, if people had a place to work in this town that was worth a damn, rather than just scratch out the best they can with what they have, the city's revenues would reflect that. We wouldn't have to create new tax schemes. We wouldn't have to raise fees, raise rates, anything like that. I have also, for, this is a long-term one, I don't know where this would fit, but for financial purposes to improve our current situation, I have talked with Solid Waste. Perhaps, if we look at it the right way, we're the 19th largest town in Texas. One thing we're never going to run out of is garbage. If we do it right and we work it backwards, as far as what the waste product is, how to handle the waste product, we would be in prime position to actually have a garbage incinerator that generates power. You always ask for solutions. Well, there's one right there. That will provide jobs, it would lower our power costs, and we could have people sending us our garbage, sending them, sending them, or sending us their garbage free fuel. We're never going to run out of garbage. We do it right, we do it responsibly. That would be one solution to raise revenues, employ people for maintenance, operation, everything else. That's called imagination and forward thinking, something that this town for 30 years has not thought of. And we can build out from there. And I've already talked with the Solid Waste Manager about this, and we have lightly discussed it, nothing solid, nothing I can say, hey, let's do this. But we've got to turn around with the financials in this city. Yeah, we've got plenty of places to live, plenty of places to spend money, but no place to earn the money. Time after time after time after time. We would have the money to replace garbage trucks, just outright replace them. Forget, just baling wire and duct tape to hold them together, and hopefully it'll make it through the end of the run at the end of the day. We would be in a lot better position if we'd stop thinking like we're just a bedroom community and actually become a city. 19th largest, we can think better financially. I've said it before, I'm not a financial guy, but that's a good broad concept.
Thank you. That was, thank you for that recommendation, Mr. Forino. Thank you. Mr. Cochran? Welcome back. You have four minutes.
RS23-202, investment reports, third quarter. Money that is missing due to poor investment strategy led by the Colleen's own person. Yes, 2023 exceeded expectations person, the city manager. Yippee! If you look at this report, which we're going to see a little bit later on, it does show that we have lost revenue. I had my daughter look at it, and she says we lost $4.1 million. For those watching at home in the gallery, please take a look at the attachments within your online program. It shows that public funds and investments are down $4.1 million. Yes, $4.1 million from the last quarter alone. Happy holidays, Mr. Grinch. The retirement portfolio funding for the city is coming apart. I also believe everyone should know that the city itself has what they call unfunded decisions that is posted on the webpage by the Budget Office. Instead of paying the city manager more money year after year, the city departments come up with 63 items they would like funded versus him. Some of the items, for example, from the Human Resource Department include $47,000 so they could have a third-party investigator look at the complaints within the city government. $3,000 for the Human Resource Department so they can hire a part-time clerk to file paperwork. $20,000, the Lions Club Senior Center could use to make facility improvements. $29,000, the city could have and hire a full-time person to work at the warming center. $19,000, the fire department could have upgraded emergency response software. $47,000, the Animal Services Department could have a new animal control officer. Apparently, no one looks at the unfunded because they don't have any money since it's given to the city manager. Let's move on. How many people knew that the Colleen is running out of money and they are currently in the red? Very few, I partake. Clean sales tax revenue is declining. It's been declining for two years. Slowly, the city is going bankrupt due to mismanagement of taxpayer funds. Notice how the 2024 budget was finalized two months ago, and yet the city keeps bringing more things to add, more things to add to the debt. Even tonight, when you look at the agenda, last-minute add-on, $71,000 for this, $264,000 for that, $461,000 for that. Do these things fall out of the sky? Apparently, the city manager isn't doing his job, as these things are not part of his strategic planning, his forward-thinking, or his long-term management of my taxpayer dollars, as your taxpayer dollars as well. I guess if money is not coming out of his pocket, his attitude is let's freely spend it. Who knows? I won't be here for long. The city council will stand, not stand in your way. They'll freely let you keep spending as much as you want. Speaking of ignorance, are we still in a stage-two water conservation crisis? According to the webpage on the city council, yes. However, the budget that I've seen doesn't show how much money is being poured down the drain based on mismanagement. What it does show is a highly-paid public affairs officer who we need to pay more money since they are unavailable to update the city's online calendar. If you look at it right now, it has one event for the month of January and zero events for February 2024. Trust me, the calendar is blank other than that. Do we need to invest more money to hire someone to fix that calendar, maybe a second public affairs person to follow the mayor around? May I remind everyone again, the latest financial document shows that we're in the hole by $4.1 million. Thank you.
Mr. Kagan?
The only thing I can say to all that is the inability to understand a report doesn't mean the city's losing money. In fact, it's just the opposite. So I really don't know where to go with that. Sales taxes have been increasing for the past two years. It's black and white on the website. Clearly, I'm at a loss.
Councilmember Boyd?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm also at a loss. We read these documents, we understand them. We've had Mr. Kagan here for, how many years has it been so far? Four years? And he goes through quarterly evaluations at the end of the year. The council frankly determines whether or not we want him to remain our city manager. There's job performances taken into that. There's recommendations from HR for the pay scale. There's pure city, things that are factored into it, and we have found it appropriate to keep our city manager. Because according to us, and all the information that we have, we are comfortable with him running our city. There is no major deficit. There's major objectives that he has laid out across the, you know, for the city. So I guess I want to put that out there because it's consistent, you know, the city manager, the city manager, but I mean, the entire council's in favor of our city manager. He's doing a great job, which is why he's here, and will be here for 2024. Thank you.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Thank you for that statement. Also, yes, sales tax revenue has increased over the last couple of years, and this is a challenge that's ongoing, and trying to find ways to make those improvements. A question was asked about businesses and where are they in jobs and improvements. They are coming, they are here, and they're also researching our area as part of the KEDC. You know, there are at least four or five organizations that I can tell you right now that are exploring our area, and they're watching us now, they're watching our meetings, they're watching how we conduct ourselves as a city, how we are progressing. There are businesses that are here that are doing their best. And so, thank you for sharing your ideas and your, you know, your incentives and your thoughts on opportunities to increase our job market. They should be looked into. But again, we are always open to people who are looking to start businesses and bring those industries here to the city of Colleen. We are open for business. We are willing to create new opportunities for our citizens. But it won't happen overnight, and this is a multi-layered challenge that every city has to face. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Councilmember Boyd, Councilwoman Gonzalez, and Mr. Kagan. Any other counsel before I move on? All right, thank, all right, thank you. Mr. Sean Price? Welcome back, Mr. Price. You have four minutes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Good evening, Mr. Barnes.
Councilmembers. Yeah, so I had several topics on this one, on the workshop tonight, so I'm going to do a shotgun blast at you, not for real, but just with questions here. So on the, I would concur with the investment report that other members out here in society has made statements to. I would agree with that, and I would say closer look at bringing higher-end manufacturing or higher-end businesses here. Under 23-204, I don't know if you know about the libraries and the controversy about the grooming books that are being purchased by several school, you know, homosexuality to kindergartens and gender-fluid ideology and all this other stuff. Are we going to be spending any of that money here? Out of this $90,000? Are we going to be doing LGBTQ books for our kindergarteners? This is, I'm just wondering, right? Because that's, I have a disagreement with that. I don't think that we need to groom our children into a sexual ideology or that there's more than just two sexes. Okay? So that's my fear there, is that we're buying books under these labels. RS23-210, I would ask that you support that and bring these people online. They do an awesome job out there at the Veterans Cemetery. I think that they would bring shine to the star of Colleen, right? And I think that the gentleman that operates that and runs out there is a man of honor and distingues himself even with the awards that they get. Because, you know, I spoke to him earlier. I think it's a top-notch position that we should take for the city. And if we're going to add something or add a responsibility, I think that this, this is a good, good investment. I disagree with giving the city manager, not to be disrespectful, right? But I disagree with giving him a raise. I disagree with him getting paid well above everybody else, right? At the top notch. Do I believe that he deserves to be at the top notch? Yes, I do. He's our city manager. He manages the city. But I don't think that it's at the worth of $270,000 a year. You know, if he's getting paid more than our Senate, our US senators, I've got an issue with that. You know what I'm saying? All the other cities around our local area, he doesn't get that much. The city managers don't get as paid as much as he does. So I think that the money can be well-used to other staff, to get money at other staff.
Yes, sir.
That was on our last agenda item?
No, he's talking under, which he can. He is talking under item, I can tell you in one minute when I find it, because I was looking at it. Our, yes, he's talking under, hold your thought, Mr. Price. He did, he didn't say point or order.
Not a problem. You don't hurt me none. I'm okay with it.
Because, you know, do we stop his time?
Yes, she did.
Thank you for that. He is under item, our investment report, or he can talk on our receive our quarterly financial report. He can talk about that. So I apologize for that interruption.
Not a problem.
Sir, the floor is still yours.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
And it's not to knock anything about it, I just think that, you know, other staff members, all right, if we're not doing it for anybody else under the staff, the city staff, right, then I think it's a disservice. Yeah, that's just my position on it. Not to knock that he deserves to be up there at the top notch. That's not my point. You know, it's not that he doesn't do a job, doesn't do a good job, or whatever, but at this time, at $33.8 trillion in debt as a nation, right? Really? Are we, you know, we're buying items and stuff like that at, over the cost? I think we need to get some austerity.
Mr. Price, sir, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. And I agree with you about the State Cemetery, Veterans Cemetery, that is a worthy cause. We will now move on to Melissa Brown. You have four minutes. Welcome back.
Again, as I have every week, in a workshop prior to this, I rise in support of the Safer Streets for All Grant, and request that any other citizens, even if it's just to come up and say that much, come up and pledge their support for it. Primarily, I wanted to discuss DS23-120, which showed up at the last minute after the original agenda had been posted, discussing the posting of the rules of decorum at the entrances and exits of city council chambers. Not exactly sure what the intention behind that is. However, there are a couple of suggestions I would have if that goes into place. For example, then the rules of decorum for council should be posted on the dais in front of each and every one of your chairs. There should also be something in writing that explains how this works out, because every week I come in here, this is different. This is the sign-up sheet. If you don't have filled out, you're not allowed to talk. So now, for tonight, for example, if there were a public hearing, a person has to come in and fill this out three different times, three different sheets, but for some reason, all three segments are on the sheet. I don't recall that being brought up by the council before. It also has been changed to say that the citizen comment on non-agenda items is for residents only. Unfortunately, the Texas Open Meetings Act says that any questions or inquiries that are brought up on non-agenda items by members of the public may only be addressed by statements of fact or restatement of their current policies or procedures. It does not say that you can limit it to only residents of the city or the subdivision that you're in. It says members of the public. So I think that needs to go back and be looked at again. From your own governing standards, the city of Colleen Council believes that effective municipal governance requires that individual council members adhere to a general set of principles when dealing with each other and the public. Furthermore, the city council desires to conduct its meetings in a manner that is respectful, effective, and efficient while fostering an environment that is fair, open, and responsive to the needs of the community. Each council member will endeavor to make the citizens comfortable and part of the process at the meetings, make visitors comfortable by being courteous and respectful and respecting their opinions, not coming back with snarky comments to the public. Do their best to communicate in clear, concise, and audible language and written communication. I sent an email a week ago, I have received one written response to it so far. Thank you very much, Councilwoman Gonzalez. Strive to maintain a tone of voice that is courteous and sincere. I could go on, and I can point to the fact that our chair doesn't follow those. Mayor responsibilities is also to encourage participation. Part of the responsibilities is attendance, part of them is the duty to vote, not refuse to break a tie vote when it comes up. Part of it is also just having a general decorum and not impugning the integrity or motives of any other council member or staff member. And we should add citizen to that. We shouldn't disregard citizens when we say you shouldn't impugn anybody's character. You can keep going. I know you all have access to the governing standards. They need to be updated to reflect what was voted on most recently, because the last meeting that we just had, as I stated before, what the council had passed was not on the agenda, and not a single council member spoke up about it, even though your governing standards say you are responsible for making sure those standards are adhered to. Thank you.
You're welcome. Madam Sec, Madam Attorney, I have a question. On our citizen comments on the non-agenda item, the station, the statement that is in highlighted, I guess on mine would be in yellow, is that a legal statement?
Just to be clear, you're talking about the section under citizen comments on non-agenda items. It starts, this section allows residents of Colleen?
Correct.
Okay. That first part will, comes from the governing standards, and then the last part, the last, the last sentence comes straight from state law.
All right. Thank you. Council, okay. Can Mrs. Cooper? I just want to clarify with the city attorney that if you're not a resident of Colleen, you cannot speak on non-agenda item. Good evening, ma'am. You have four minutes.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Cooper, I should say.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Madam, everybody, council and city staff. Y'all are usually, I'm speaking on reference to the decorum, speaking on a few other activities. I'm usually here every Tuesday. I don't know if anybody noticed that I stopped coming. And honestly, it's because of the energy in here. It's become toxic. I used to come because I learned. I learned how to be a resident, I learned how to participate, I learned how to engage, I learned how to operate my business, I learned how to grow. I stopped coming because I stopped learning. When we talk about decorum, I think, asinine is not a cuss word, right? Asinine. I think it's insane to ask, demand respect while not giving it. There are a few of us that are a little closer to school age when they taught us, you know, if you ain't got nothing nice to say, don't say nothing at all. And so, calling someone incompetent, stupid idiot on a regular basis, constantly berating individuals while also asking you to not make a face, is asinine. Asking for respect as a resident comes with respect given. And so, I feel that we can have our disagreements, but we can also speak as adults. I want to continue to learn. You guys are, I feel, doing the best you can, and are we always going to agree with what's going on? No. To come in here weekly and listen to this, it makes it hard to engage. And so, I'm speaking future-forward on decorum. Let me see if I can gather it real quick. Yes, let's post, let's post the decorum procedures, because a lot of people forget. Sometimes you have to hold yourself accountable. You have to sit back and you have to self-reflect and ask yourself, are you operating in the character that you would teach your child? And we don't teach our kids to behave this way. And so, I think it's, it's, you can't. You have to come in, correct. You can come in and disagree. And I applaud some individuals that come in and they do disagree, but not And I applaud some individuals that come in and they do disagree, but not once has a name been called. The moment you start calling me out my character, then we have a problem, because we should have pride in who we are and the things that we approach. And this is basically volunteer work that y'all are doing. And so to be berated on a regular basis for time that you are given from individuals who don't sit on a committee, don't sit on a board, don't sit on any organization, have not volunteered their time except for research, to come in and ruin my mood on a regular basis, I think is asinine. That's my word of the night. I really came in hoping to hear more about some exciting stuff. I talked to Chief, uh, Campbell, so one of my items on there is the fireworks. And he said something about the fireworks not being able to be hailed downtown for Fourth of July. And I understand why, so I really don't have much to say on that. He's gonna put on an amazing presentation, and he's gonna give his reasons why, and I will not disagree with Chief Kavinsky. Um, and so, but yeah, I completely agree. Um, I sat in this space wondering how we can voice our opinions, be understood and be heard, ask for respect when someone else gives their opinion. Um, just speaking on the other topic earlier, um, Ms. Kristen White came up here and said that she stopped coming for the very same reason, and she expressed her reason why. And I felt that in my soul, because I also have experienced negative responses. And when you come in and you also always have people constantly enraged and engulfed in the need to voice their opinion, I left the room, because I had to stop myself from crying. It's too much. We can't ask for people. An individual called someone spineless and cowardly. Yes, ma'am. Absolutely. And so I agree with the decorum being posted.
Thank you very much. Ronnie Russell.
Good evening, sir. You have four minutes.
Coming here about PH twenty-three dash zero-six-two, um, and changing the district from B-five to B-C-one. I think that changing it to B-C-one is going to bring, uh, a consistent type of elevation that, that the downtown actually needs. Changing to B-C-one is going, is in, is inconsistent to what the, um, composite, the, the comprehension plan was in bringing life to the downtown area. Um, Ms. Carolyn Brown brought the East Center from Harker Heights and bringing the East Center to the downtown Colleen area. The last time that building had, had, was occupied was August of twenty-nineteen. Here it is, twenty-twenty-three. There's still no one in it right now. So looking at that building not creating any type of tax revenue for the city itself, changing it to, from, uh, changing it to B-C-one will bring more taxes into the city from that perspective. Um, I think changing it would be in favor of the citizens. Changing it would be in favor of the community. Changing it would be in favor of a new small business that is opening up in this area. I love Harker Heights, but bringing this, uh, business to this area, changing it to B-C-one is gonna bring new eyes into what's going on into the downtown area. When the, um, Bell County Annex Building, uh, does come into fruition, it's just gonna be more added eyes, because there's a lot of people that still don't know anything about the new Bell County Annex coming to the downtown area. So now, when they're coming out and going to, um, this new East Center, now that, that brings more potential for people to see what's going on in the downtown area. Um, I had a couple of meetings today, um, and looking at the potential of this area. I think from the B-C-one perspective, it's really bringing opportunity. If we look past where it is right now and look at where it's going to go, it's gonna be able to mentor other business owners. It's gonna be able to foster new relationships, because this is a transient environment. So when new soldiers come into this area, you're already established the, um, the capital improvement, this thirty-eight, um, this East Gate to thirty-eight. Starbucks is already here. Starbucks is the anchor for a lot of economic development, if, if people don't know that. If Starbucks see that Ransier is going to grow into what it's going to be, then why not change a B-five to B-C-one? Don't look at where it is right now. Look at where it's going to go, because, trust me, there is an event that's gonna be in the East Center that someone on this dais is gonna go to. So changing, changing it to B-C-one is going to be the potential of new birthday parties, new retirement ceremonies, new cane cietas. I probably said it wrong, but whatever, you know what I meant. Um, new events, um, and even as an organization, um, it's gonna be new events that I can bring into that area as well. So from a personal perspective, changing it to B-C-one is great. From a, from an organization perspective, changing it to see, um, this grow into something that is going to be great, not just for the citizens, but for the young business entrepreneurs that see how much that, um, Ms. Carolyn has done from Harker Heights and bringing that energy into the city of Colleen, the potential is, is gonna be great. Thank you.
Thank you, um, Mr. Russell. And I stopped, I think, uh, Councilwoman Gonzalez talked about, um, the north side bringing in more businesses. And also Councilmember Boyd spoke some, also on that, the great things the city of Colleen is doing. So thank you for, uh, speaking on behalf of her. That was, that's truly nice of you. All right, counsel, I need a request from you to move two items, so we have individuals that have traveled from out of town. And if it's okay with the council, I would like to move in that discussion, uh, at workshop, two of the items, and it's, it would be DS dash twenty-three dash one-one-seven and DS, uh, dash twenty-three dash one-one-nine. Uh, Councilmember Adams.
Yeah, I was gonna request to move the same thing, Madam Mayor, so I'm in support.
All right, so that's cool. Councilmember Solomon. Oh, no, I just was just, it's not a, take a motion direction. I just wanted to see if it's okay, just so nod ahead. All right then. Madam, um, uh, stand by, Madam Secretary. Okay, counsel, I just, uh, saw another item that needs to be removed, uh, moved, uh, up to. Uh, we do have out-of-town guests for the Texas State Veteran Cemetery. So if that's okay, I want to move. Also RS dash twenty-three dash two-one-zero. Councilmember Adam, I mean, Alvarez. Uh, Counsel, uh, RS dash twenty-three dash two-one-zero. Are y'all okay with that? You, Councilwoman Gonzalez, Solomon? Okay, all right then. Uh, Madam Secretary, in this order, and thank you, counsel, for, uh, respecting their time and, uh, because they do have to get back home, and it has gotten late. Um, item ten, in this order, ten, twelve, and fourteen. Thank you. Madam Secretary, would you please read, uh, resolutions?
RS twenty-three dash two-one-zero. Consider memorandum resolution to authorize an interlocal agreement with the General Land Office and Veterans Land Board for the City of Colleen to assume responsibility for cemetery management and operation services for the Texas State Veteran Cemetery in Colleen, Texas.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Cagle.
Yes, sir, Mayor and counsel. Uh, the Texas Government Code, Chapter seven ninety-one, authorizes the local governments to contract for governmental functions, and the Texas State Veteran Cemetery is currently managed by the General Land Office and the Veterans Land Board, uh, using contract employees. This interlocal agreement would allow for the City of Colleen to assume responsibility for cemetery management to include, to include absorbing the current employees into the City of Colleen employment. The Veterans Land Board will retain ownership and responsibility for all the veteran cemetery assets to include, but not limited to, the buildings, real property, capital expenditures, and other equipment and assets whose cost is borne by the Veterans Land Board. The General Land Office will pay all of the City of Colleen's direct and indirect costs, and the GLO is responsible for all capital repairs over a thousand dollars. And there are national standards that the City of Colleen will be required to maintain. Um, we, we worked quite a bit on this, uh, on this. We, we think we have a budget that's fair, that will, uh, allow us, uh, to maintain the cemetery and the standards that is expected, uh, without cost to the city. Uh, Dr. Kelly, um, with, uh, General Land Office and Veterans Land Board is here. If you would like to hear from him. There are five state cemeteries, or about to be five. There's Mission, Corpus Christi, uh, Colleen, Abilene, and a, a, one that started construction in the city of Lubbock, and I believe we are the largest. Um, but we do believe we've worked out a good contract, uh, with, with the land board, and I do recommend, uh, approval. We would, um, take over operations in February, and the budget that's in your packet is just for those months, February through the end of the fiscal year. So it won't be, i- i- if this is approved, it wouldn't be long. Um, after we start operation, we'll be working on the, on the next year's budget that we would submit to the land, uh, Veterans Land Board. Be happy to answer any questions, as I said, Dr. Kelly's here as well.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Cagle, for that update. And if, uh, Doctor, and I know I saw Mr. Sergeant Major Retired Gault. Please, both of y'all come to, forward, please. Please come forward and introduce yourself. And, um, the council, I do have, uh, four council members that have questions, so please. So just please, Ms. Sergeant Major, come on up. And then just introduce yourself to everyone.
Madam Mayor, council members, city manager, city staff, good evening. Uh, my name is Dr. John Kelly. I am the director of the Texas State Veteran Cemetery Program. And that program includes the Central Texas State Veteran Cemetery here in Colleen. But as the city manager mentioned, we have a cemetery down in Mission, in the Rio Grande Valley. We have a cemetery in Corpus Christi. We have one in Abilene, and we're now building one in Lubbock. Uh, my, at all of the cemeteries, I maintain a state employee called an OSR or onsite representative. The main charge of that OSR is to ensure that the standards are met, and they are directly responsive to me to ensure that that happens. Many of you know him, uh, but our OSR out at our cemetery here is Commandant Sergeant Major Retired Doug Gault.
Oh, yeah, I'm the guy that's over at the Colleen Cemetery, so I oversee that. Uh, just to give you a highlight, what we, we gonna bring to the city is, we just did our NCA award. NCA comes down, and they check everything from maintenance to gas to how much dirt are there, whatever. And we, we, uh, think we won the, uh, what do they call it, the National?
Operational excellence.
Operational ex, ex, excellent award. So the standards are gonna be good, and I think it's gonna be a good thing for, for the young guys, which is the big thing we're looking at, for the, the young guys that are down there that don't, they're contracted. They have no, nothing, no retirement, no 401K. So this is as, thinking as a Sergeant Major, it's just like you say, take care of soldiers. So, and I'm just, I'm the manager for just, uh, Texas Veterans Land Board. So I oversee all four cemeteries, soon to be five, but I work out of Colleen. I'm his right-hand man.
Thank you very much. So if you guys would stand by, and Mr. Cagle, I have some questions for the council. And thank you for all your service and what you have done for our great nation. Uh, Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Cagle, for the presentation, and to the gentlemen for being here, uh, representing the veteran cemetery. Uh, I don't really have any reservations about City Colleen assuming responsibility of the cemetery management and operational service. Uh, this is something we already do, uh, in North Colleen. And with the Central Texas State Veteran Cemetery located in District Four, I am in full support of this initiative. Uh, with that said, I have just two questions. Um, I do understand the city will be absorbing the current employees, uh, into the city of Colleen, but the question is, what will the process look like in the form of training?
We're gonna go through onboarding with all of them, just like their new employees. Uh, every month, we have new employee orientation, and sometimes it's ten, sometimes it's thirty people. There are about twenty-two employees. Uh, we'll, we'll do one specifically for them. Um, so it's, it's onboarding for all the, all the city benefits, uh, learning all the rules and regulations that, that apply to city employees. HR's gonna be in charge of that. And we haven't decided yet if we'll go out there and maybe just go out to their place. It's probably the best way, take it out, out, take the show out there. And so they've got to make choices on, uh, health insurance, dental insurance, all the other benefits that we offer. They'll, they've got to get educated on that so they can make those choices. And that's one of the reasons we're not starting until February, because we're gonna have to, if this is approved, we're gonna have to really jump on that hard in January.
Got it. Thank you for that. Excuse me, and with the city, uh, potentially taking over the operations, uh, my next question is, how would the city's branding be incorporated into, into all of this without disturbing the rever, the reverence, excuse me, of the property?
Um, well, I hadn't, uh, hadn't considered that, because it, it's still, it's a state veteran cemetery, and we're, we're assuming the role of a contractor that, that's, uh, working for the state and maintaining the cemetery. So, um, I guess it depends on, on what that might be.
Sure.
Um, they, they have a lot of rules and regulations, uh, um, for, I guess, the flags that can be displayed, everything. I don't know if we could put a Colleen flag out there or not.
No, I wasn't looking for that.
Okay.
No, I think the question better was, uh, how, how are we gonna communicate the city's new role with the cemetery, with the cemetery?
Well, it, it will be a part of the Parks and Recreation Department.
Gotcha.
And, um, right now, we have just been focused on taking over operations and, and not on the publicity side of it yet, but we're happy to, to work something up to let people know what's going on out there.
Awesome. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyd. Uh, Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Boyd stole my, his last question was stolen from me. Um, the, you had mentioned, uh, when the cars transfer, with that, so we're gonna do this in the middle of the fiscal year? Or we're gonna wait in the?
This will start in February.
Okay. And so then, so next, yeah, I think you mentioned that in your presentation. So next summer, the council will review the budget, and that will be based off of expenditures that's coming from the state, and are there any additional expenditures that we will have to make?
Yes, sir, that, if we have to make additional expenditures, we, we would be reimbursed. And, and we'll, we'll sit down with the state and work out that budget as well.
Okay, got it. So even if we budgeted for that, and it goes up more, we would also request, so that would just have to be reflected properly in the budget, just to?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you. Um, just a quick question. How does they, with us becoming a contractor for the state, how does that affect, if at all, any existing contracts that they may have versus what we would have as far as continuing on any services? And I mean that regarding any maintenance equipment, or is that gonna be shared? Or are we using our own? Are we purchasing?
Nope. They have all the equipment, and we're gonna take it over and maintain it. And, uh, when the time comes, if something needs to be replaced, uh, that's something that the state would do.
The state will cover that cost. Thank you.
So, um, thank you, um, Councilwoman Gonzalez. So, uh, I, I like when you said, Mr. Cagle, anything that we will have to pull out of our budget, the state will reimburse us. I think that's very important. Uh, I think, um, just to honor our fallen men and women, and the city of Colleen was chosen to, to take care of, uh, the grounds. I think, I mean, really, that's an honor. And, uh, to, to have that opportunity. And I've known Sergeant Major, uh, him and my late husband served together for a long time. And, and to partner, the city to partner with you and your team, Doctor, and I know you also as well. Uh, we thank you for choosing us, to, to be a part of the legacy, to honor the men and women that made the ultimate sacrifice. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Cagle.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, that's all? Items for discussion at workshop, Madam Secretary.
DS twenty-three-one-seven, one-one-seven, receive quarterly financial report.
Thank you. Mrs. Tangaline. Good evening, ma'am. I know it's been a while.
Good evening, ma'am. Yes.
So we have a special guest tonight.
Well, actually, uh, Mr. Scott Grover over here is here for the, uh, investment report.
Oh, wait a minute, am I on the wrong one? Oh, I was getting, calling here, um, stand by.
Yes, ma'am.
Mm-mm. I called the wrong one. And please, uh, I apologize.
Yes, no problem.
Because I was looking. Because I was looking, it was two. I skipped and put one in front of it. Sorry about that. Okay, you can stay up there, because it's still you. So council, just, I called 12, and I should have called two, because he's from out of town, and y'all okay with that? Okay, Madam Secretary, we're going back to resolutions.
RS, RS-23202, consider a memorandum resolution approving the investment reports for the quarter ended September 30, 2023.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. And Mrs. Tangalane, I truly apologize for that error on my behalf.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, council member. As mandated by the Texas Government Code, Chapter 2256, the Public Fund Investment Act, and in compliance with the City of Colleen Governance Policy, we must provide a comprehensive investment quarterly report to our government body. Under our established agreement with meter, as our, sorry, as our investment advisor, today we have Mr. Scott Grover, and he's going to present the fourth quarter report for fiscal year '23.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Sir?
Good evening, and thank you. I appreciate the thought. So we'll be brief. I know it's been a long evening. So just want to wrap up the last, last meeting here of the calendar year, which is hard to believe. But as we kind of dive into this, the main things, as we've continued to talk about, is what the Fed is battling this year. They've embarked in what we would believe is nearing the end of this current rate hiking cycle. They've not hiked in the last several meetings, and they're meeting this week, actually, in a very timely sense, to close out the year. And so right now, you know, we continue to reiterate, even with the Fed doing nothing, it's still having a tightening effect on the economy. So as rates continue to be high and elevated, debt side borrowing is obviously hitting the consumer, although longer rates stay elevated, and that's also hitting the economic market. So the markets are really starting to price in the timing of when does the Fed start to cut rates and start to ease policy. And so as you look here, the two main things that they're trying to achieve is maintain a strong labor market, being unemployment, and we're looking at on the left-hand bar here, jobless claims. And those trends are starting to reverse and rise, not at an alarming rate, but it is a sign that the jobs market is starting to weaken a little bit, and the Fed is very conscious of that. And so on the right-hand chart, you're looking at inflation, PCE being a measure of inflation here. We've broken it out on a six-month basis, and we've really carved out core PC and headline PCE. The reason we've broken those out is because headline PC is what you would typically hear in the news, you know, just general inflation news, inflation was X today, that's headline PCE. You can see that number is 2.5% on a six-month change. The core PC actually remains a little bit elevated. That is a number that's going to be a little more impactful to the general consumer, and it's staying a little more higher, and that's the number the Fed is mostly focused on right now, trying to get that down, and the reason they haven't decided to cut rates or done anything over the last several meetings. So we'll get a little more guidance from them going forward, but the main thing here is that the US economy is still doing quite strong, and there are some signs that things are slowing, and the Fed is mindful of that. We really want to just focus going forward on what the Fed is hoping to achieve. And when we look at the dot plot here, we're comparing basically what the Fed members are optimistic for going into next year. So you see the orange dots are really bunched up in 2024. That's telling us that most of the Fed members are in the same camp, that we should start lowering interest rates in 2024, and the markets are actually pricing in a potential rate cut as early as May of this, of next year. So for us, you know, we've talked about this all year, we've been extending the city's funds to the extent we can to lock in rates while we have them. And it's proven to be a very valuable choice, because rates have actually started to come down over the last several months, and so we've been able to lock in higher interest rates despite rates coming down. And the goal now is to continue to do that even into next year. But we're being very mindful of the liquidity needs of the city, expenditures and debt payments and stuff coming up, and really balancing the balance of being able to lock stuff in and then keeping stuff liquid for day-to-day needs. So I'll just jump ahead real quick here. Sorry. Looking at the change over the quarter, so key things here to take a look at, not a significant change on the, on the book values, just due to general spendings of the, you know, the year. You typically see city funds being spent down, so general expenditures going down, hitting a low point in September, October, then you start to receive tax revenue, and balances will start to begin building. So the general changes that you're seeing there are just day-to-day expenditures, no investment impacts whatsoever. The weighted average yield has continued to climb. Last quarter was a 3.79. As we've had investments roll off, and we've reinvested, the weighted average yield of the portfolio is ending at 4.24. So positive, positive returns still trending higher there. On this page, you can see how portfolio is positioned. So we've continued to push funds out into that one-to-five-year spectrum, remaining well-balanced and diversified. We want to make sure you have plenty of money coming due inside of a year at all times for debt payments and unknown expenditures, and then keeping stuff overnight as well for the same purpose. But we've also been able to accomplish that goal of locking in rates out longer to a comfortable level. And as the portfolio ages, we'll continue to look at this, but for right now, we're continuing to maintain these target allocations, and if the Fed decides to give us some different guidance this week, we'll adjust accordingly. The last page here is just a change of asset allocations over the last, you know, couple of years. Key takeaway that I kind of skimmed over that I shouldn't have, interest earnings for the quarter was $2.4 million, and year-to-date interest earned was $7.8 million. And so that's a very great number for the city, and the goal is obviously to keep earning that kind of dollar amount for next year as well. Even if rates do decline, there's confidence knowing that you've locked in rates to continue to protect that interest income. Any questions for me?
Thank you for the update. I know I had the opportunity to sit down with you and the financial team, the finance team earlier today, and I think some of the, three things I, you didn't go in detail on, but I wish you would. You talked about the daily debt payment, and you also talked about the housing rate interest, and also student loans, and the bank percentage.
Yes.
Could you just go over there? I think that's very important for the council.
Yeah, absolutely. And naturally, as you would expect, borrowing rates to remain elevated and even coming higher has been a bit of a deterrent for new mortgage starts. You know, there's still a lot of demand out there for housing, but the longer debt rates stay elevated, it's obviously having an impact on the consumer to enter into new mortgages at higher rates. So you've seen a little bit of a slowing effect in the housing market from that. Still a lot of construction, new, new construction starts have slowed a little bit, as you would expect. That has been a, you know, an outcome of basically the higher, higher interest rates over the last, last year here. So, you know, naturally, as you would, you would expect if the Fed does start to cut, hopefully that would start to spur some more, some more growth and ambition to, on the mortgage side and the housing side. Regarding the, the banking aspect, you know, in this environment, when rates are rising very, very quickly, and they're, they're high right now, and there's an expectation that rates were cut, you're seeing banks not really interested in offering products, so CDs, which we can go out and buy, beyond a year. So they're, they're offering some pretty competitive rates inside of a year, but nothing really beyond a year. There's a drastic drop-off. And so, you know, while we're agnostic to the product that we're buying for the city, we want to try to lock in rates longer. And so we're not really looking to buy bank products right now, but there may be a time where we actually do shift to that if things start to level out and the banks start to have a little stronger appetite for deposits. So continuing to source the best available securities we can that's safe and under the investment policy of the city, we'll continue to look, look for those going forward here. The last one to touch on, you mentioned, ma'am, was student loans. You know, over the last couple of years, student loans have not really been a thing. You haven't had to pay them, there's been a little bit of a delay, and we talked about delinquencies. And delinquencies have actually started to rise a little bit from autos, credit cards, mortgage rates. And student loans, you can't be delinquent if you don't have to pay them, but those times are changing. And so that could actually be a bit of a, a consumer hit. If you do have to start, you know, folks are starting to repay those student loans, does that start to pull from the household budgets? You know, and overall, just looking at how consumers are operating in a household, things seem to be very strong right now, but as things, you know, the economy starts to get weaker and sluggish, just looking at those areas where we could have a, have a hit within your, within our economy.
All right. Thank you for that, and people use more credit cards now.
Yes.
Than cash.
Yeah, yeah, the pay it, the buy it now, pay it later mentality is actually quite strong.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First question is, do you, do you remember what it was last year, this, at the same time as this report, the change?
The interest rate, or?
The, the portfolio market value by far. I see, I see the, the change was negative $4 million, but that's just the investment change, but not the operating.
That's correct. So market value is the price of securities.
Right.
So it's, it's not a, a value that the city's carrying, it's a paper value. So when bond prices rise, or when yields rise, like they have, market values decrease. It's the nature of bond prices, and vice versa. When yields fall, bond prices rise. So in a rising interest rate environment, market values will decrease, but the city hasn't lost any funds or really realized that change, because, you know, a year from now, if yields drop 200 basis points, that market value will flip the other way and go positive.
And we're adjusting our investments ba, based on that, so we don't realize it.
Correct. That's exactly right. We, so, sorry to interrupt, we hold to maturity, so as long as we hold to maturity, the market value actually never really comes into, into picture.
As, as much as I would like Colleen to be the center of the universe, I know that our economy is not really depicted on there, but do we have numbers that show what the effect of some of this is locally, like the, the credit card, bringing the loans? Because I think that'll affect some of the decisions that are made by businesses and us in the long run, how our citizens here are reacting. I know that this is a national thing, but, you know, deep in the heart of Texas, we could still make some sways.
Absolutely. You know, as far as the, the local level of Colleen, not so much data that we have readily available. We do track a lot of the regional economic indicators through the Dallas Fed, the Houston markets, et cetera, and would agree that the, the Central Texas market in general seems to be outperforming the rest of the market. And that's something that we've actually talked about, is that even in an economic downturn, because of the, you know, divisive investment and manufacturing and just the different functions that's going on in the central region of the US, we believe those areas could actually weather an economic downturn quite, you know, a bit better. But again, you know, it's hard to predict some of these things, but I would agree with that mentality, that, you know, the region seems to be doing quite stronger than the other markets. The East-West Coast markets seem to be struggling a little more at this point.
And the last question I have is, there's, have you done, are there any comparisons, and maybe not on this one, but maybe another one, of how we're doing compared to other cities of like makeup?
Sure, yeah. I mean, we personally work with, you know, over 300 public entities, a variety of them being cities. The one thing I can say is that because of the unique nature of each entity, the cash flow drives a lot of your decision-making, or our decision-making. You know, the economic picture is one thing, but then your needs and cash flow demands really drive a lot of what we can and can't do. With that being said, though, you know, you are doing quite well from an interest rate perspective. You know, we've seen some that were a little more reluctant to not extend the portfolio. We have some that were very short, and, you know, when we first started working with the city, the city was very short, and we recommended maybe opening up the policy to be able to invest out to five years instead of just three years. So those little decisions have actually allowed you to take advantage of the situation a bit better than some. So I would say, you know, I don't have a direct comparison that I can give you, but from that perspective, just being open-minded, talking with the Finance Committee, they've really allowed yourselves to be flexible and adapt to the situation.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Mr. Kegel.
So you told us the interest earnings for the year, it was 7.8.
Eight.
7.8. Do you recall what it was last year?
No, but I can tell you the quarterly report.
Yeah, it's far less than half of that.
Oh, I'm sure.
I'm pretty sure, yes. And just one other point, this is an investment report, it's the total money that the city is holding, and that changes. It goes way up in October, November, December, January, when property taxes are paid, and then they're pretty much done being paid, and then that amount will go down because city expenditures are fairly level. Revenues come in at the first of the year, so the last quarter is almost always the lowest quarter of investment. This is, doesn't necessarily have anything to do with the budget or performance budget. This is all the excess money that we have, and as was discussed, we, we know what our needs are on a daily, on a monthly basis, and how we can take these fund balances, which is a lot of it, and invest it longer than a day or two, up to five, up to five years, depending on our cash flow needs. So you will always, at this time of year, see a report that says, we had less money invested September 30 than we did the prior quarter or two quarters, because it's how the revenue comes in. That's, that's all there is to it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs.
Appreciate it. Happy holidays.
You too. Happy holiday, Mary Kristen. All right. And then, Madam Secretary, we have DS-23119.
Discuss the K-Tempo Safe Streets and Roads for All SS4A grant.
Good evening, Mr. McGeal.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thanks for moving us up. We appreciate it.
You're welcome. Good evening, sir.
Yeah. This is Mr. Malsum. I'll let him introduce himself, but he's a consultant helping us, and the plan, for those of you who haven't met, I'm the Plan Manager with Central Texas Council Governments and KTMBO. We're developing a safety action plan for our region, not just Bell County, but all seven counties we cover, and Mr. Malsum here is, is helping us out, and so just want to give a little update, and if you all have any feedback, we're more than happy to hear that now. So Dan, I'll pass it off to you.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Council, City Manager and staff. Thank you for having us here tonight. As James said, my name is Dan Malsum. I work with Kim Lee Horn and Associates, a civil engineering consulting firm, and we are supporting the Central Texas Council of Governments and the Colleen Temple Metropolitan Planning Organization with the development of the Central Texas Roadway Safety Action Plan. I'm here tonight to provide the council with an overview of the plan, and I want to be available to answer any questions, and I also want to make it clear that this plan will be going on over the course of the next year, and we're more than happy to sit down with city staff to discuss specific safety needs, priorities, and project ideas to make sure that those are reflected in the regional plan. So to give an overview of the plan, this plan is a, is a resulting from a successful Safe Streets and Roads for All Grants application funded through the US Department of Transportation. While all roads in the region will be analyzed, the seven-county region of Central Texas Council of Governments, the plan focus will be primarily on locally-owned roads. We are really trying to focus on roads that are owned and maintained by cities and counties within the region. We will be partnering with TechDOT to develop this plan, and we'll be getting their input and passing feedback along to them, but we want this plan to really focus on the local roads. The process in this plan development is going to include conceptual development for up to six projects for implementation grant funding applications that can be submitted by member cities and counties, as well as up to 10 projects for Highway Safety Improvement Program or similar safety program funding applications to be submitted by member cities and counties. There's an in-kind contribution tracking system in place for the 20% local match requirement of funding that is being, that is being used for this grant, so we're trying to track in-kind time to make sure that as much of that time can be used for that local match as possible. And we are scaling up and down. We're not using the full grant amount to do this initial plan in case there's additional needs or planning activities that are identified that we can, we can continue doing that work with later with the original grant amount that was, that was awarded. A little bit about the grant program. It's a $5 billion grant program that was funded as part of the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, split for $1 billion per year over five years. As I said, there is a 20% local match requirement, but the, there's 80% federal funding for the grants, and these grants are available to MPOs, cities, counties, and tribal governments. There are two types of grant awards. There's an action plan grant that is currently funding this current action plan development. There's also an implementation grant track that would be used for subsequent project construction and program implementation from strong project candidates that are identified through this planning process. The grant amount that was awarded to SitCOC and K-Tempo was $1.87 million, and the initial plan development is making use of about 50% of that award to reserve some additional funding in case there are additional activities that are identified that would be worth developing as part of the, from the plan development. For subsequent implementation grant applications, the expected range of those awards would For subsequent implementation grant applications, the expected range of those awards would be between $2.5 million and $25 million. And the expected, those applying would expect it to be the counties and cities rather than the MPO or the COG for those implementation grants, since those would be for specific projects within member cities and counties. I'll skip this slide. We're going to focus a little bit about what the guiding principles for this plan are, and we want to, we want to bring, make sure we talk about these because this is sort of what's guiding the plan development, and these plan components will be required. The safe system approach is what the U.S. DOT is adopting as they're trying to roll this program out, and that's built on six key tenets. One, death and serious injury on our roads are unacceptable. Two, humans make mistakes. They aren't going to be perfect actors behind the wheel. Three, humans are vulnerable. If there is a crash that occurs, there's a limit to what the human body can withstand before injury or death occurs. Four, responsibility is shared. We all share a responsibility from policymakers, engineers, first responders, emergency medical staff, and drivers and users of the roadway to make sure that we have a safe system on our roads. Five, safety is proactive. We don't intend to just be chasing crashes and trying to fix things after crashes has occurred. We want to identify ways to be proactive in addressing roadway safety. And six, redundancy of the system is crucial. We want to make sure that there are different safeguards in place so that if one safeguard fails, there will be other safeguards in place to prevent the worst outcomes from occurring. There are eight required components that will be part of the Safety Action Plan. There is a requirement from U.S. DOT that there is a leadership commitment and goal setting that is, commits to an eventual elimination or significant reduction of roadway fatalities and serious injuries within the region. There is also going to be a planning structure, a Safety, Safe Streets and Roads for All Task Force that will oversee the development of the plan and the implementation of the plan once it is complete. There is already ongoing a comprehensive safety analysis where we've been reviewing crash data from the region that is going to inform where we might make investments and how we might make investments to greatest effect. There is a significant engagement and collaboration requirement. So, as a part of this, we will be doing significant public involvement, public engagement. We began that process already, and we're also meeting with stakeholders from across the region to get input from staff on what some of those safety needs and safety priorities are. There's a significant focus on the grants and equity considerations, making sure that there is, we're really thinking about making sure that the benefits from this plan, the safety benefits, are distributed across all populations and not just concentrated on those with the greatest amount of resources. There are going to be policy and process changes that are identified through this plan, as well as strategy and project selection. So, there may be projects on specific roadways or specific corridors, but we may also be looking at city or county processes or policies, or MPO county processes or policies, in thinking how they can better think through roadway safety to make decisions that are going to be widely applicable. And finally, once the plan is complete, there's a requirement that there is progress and transparency tracking. So, there are going to be performance measures that are identified as part of this plan, and one of the roles of that task force going forward will be to track performance as time goes on and the plan is implemented. The project began in September, and since then, we have begun safety data analysis. We've looked at crash data, serious and fatal injury, serious injury and fatal crash data from the past five years. And we're identifying what's called the High Injury Network. That is the selection of roadways on the system that have a higher, highest frequency of those crashes occurring. We have begun our stakeholder engagement process. We've been meeting all week with stakeholders from across the region. We've also already conducted four public engagement events so far in Cameron, San Saba, Harker Heights, and Temple. And we will be conducting at least 12 more over the course of this project. And we will be developing several versions of the action plan. The timeline's changed a little bit since this, this slide was submitted, but we'll plan to have the final version of that plan ready in January 2025. Those interim dates may shift slightly based on the timing of when different, different funding application programs come live. We want to make sure that we define success, and how we define success is really important as we develop this plan. These are some from an initial discussion that we had with stakeholders at a Safe Streets and Road for All Summit that I want to thank Councilmember Adams for being present for at that summit. Thank you for being there, Councilmember. And we want to talk about what we think we want to define success as as we develop this plan. We want this comprehensive safety plan to capture contributions and inputs from regional stakeholders from across the seven counties. We want to help secure implementation grant funding and other transportation safety funding for locally-owned roads in central Texas. There's a funding, and we want to make sure that we can develop good projects that end up securing funding in compelling ways for applications. We want to raise awareness of safety issues throughout central Texas among the public and among policymakers and officials. And we want to implement policy changes and demonstration projects that address safety issues. What we'll call, a lot of times, is low-hanging fruit. We want to find low-cost, quickly implementable strategies that can make an impact immediately once they're implemented. And most importantly, the ultimate goals, we want to reduce deaths and serious injuries on central Texas roadways. Just to talk really quickly about key currents and upcoming activities. As I said, back in early November, we had our Central Texas Safe Streets for All Summit, where we had attendees from across the region help set goals and vision what we want this plan to be. We've been conducting county-by-county leadership engagement meetings and city-by-city leadership engagement meetings within Bell County, and we have developed that safety data analysis, and that is currently with the COG and the MPO for review. We've conducted initial public engagement events, and we'll be having that first task force meeting virtually this Thursday. And then, in early 2024, we're going to be looking to formalize what that regional policy commitment towards reducing fatalities and serious injuries on our roadways looks like. And we'll be bringing that to the boards for consideration. So, one of the things that we're here tonight to answer questions about is we want to gather feedback that allows this plan to reflect local priorities, including priorities of the city of Colleen. So, I want to be able to answer any questions y'all have tonight. And as I said, we're happy to set up follow-up meetings to discuss some more of those local priorities in detail with your staff or with any council members that are interested in speaking with us. So, we're also looking to get better input on what are some community-specific public engagement approaches that will help get good input from citizens of Colleen to make sure that we get their input as part of this plan development. We want to get, make sure we document those local transportation safety concerns or what current pressure points are. And we want to make sure that we can identify what those potential safety projects or safety project types might be that are of specific interest to the city of Colleen. As I mentioned, we're also capturing contributions of regional stakeholders through in-kind time. So, we're tracking in-kind time. So, any meetings that we do set up, we'll have a little sign-in sheet, and we want to make sure we capture that information so that we can count that in-kind time towards the local match requirement for this grant. Really quickly, just want to wrap up, thinking, talking a little bit about different project funding opportunities. As I mentioned, there's that Safe Streets Implementation Grant Funding Track, but there are also a lot of other funding opportunities that we may identify projects for that would be good candidates, including the Highway Safety Improvement Program, the Transportation Alternatives Program that's focused on improvements to bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure, the Safe Routes to School Program that's focused on improvements to pedestrian and vulnerable road user infrastructure around schools, the Routes Program in rural areas, and then the STEP Program through Texas for enforcement support, for enforcement on specific focus areas for driver behavior. And lastly, just wanted to really quickly talk about how we want to get this regional policy commitment put together. There are two general options that we're going to be talking with for this commitment. There's either the commitment to establish a target date for achieving zero roadways, zero roadway fatalities and serious injuries, or a commitment setting an ambitious percentage reduction of roadway fatalities and serious injuries by a specific date with an eventual goal to eliminate roadway fatalities and serious injuries. So, there are two options we can take as we develop that commitment, and we'll be looking for input from the task force and from other stakeholders as we talk with them about that on what sort of commitment we want to set. If we want to try to pick a date to get to zero, or if we want to make that a moral commitment that we want to get there, and we want to establish an ambitious percentage reduction of where we want to see reductions in fatalities and serious injuries. And with that, I want to make sure that I give some time to answer any questions that the council may have. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir, for the update, and there are no questions. Thank you. All right, Counsel, we're going to take a five-minute break. Counselor, are you all ready? All right. We have gone over RS-23-202, And also the citizen comments. So, we will go back to the beginning of the agenda. Sorry about that. Get the time. 9:17 PM. Discuss items for regular city council meeting on December 19, 2023. Minutes. Madam Secretary.
MN 23029, consider minutes of regular city council meeting of November 28, 2023.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, resolutions.
RS 23203, consider a memorandum resolution awarding bid number 2407, non-exclusive rental car concessions for the rental car lease agreements at the Colleen Regional Airport.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Good evening, Mr. Provost.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, City Manager, and citizens of Colleen. Before I use the rental car lease agreements at the Colleen Regional Airport. The rental cars agreements. The Colleen Regional Airport has national-brand rental car operations at their airport, which include Avis Budget, Enterprise Holdings, and the Hertz Corporation. They lease vehicles to customers and businesses, and they've been operating at the airport since it opened in 2004. Bid 2407 was released in September of 2023, and we received sponsors in October of '23. Four responders was Avis Budget Car Rental, the Hertz Corporation and Dollar, Ian Holdings for Enterprise, and EA Holdings for Alamo and National. The agreement is for five years with no extensions, and the annual revenue anticipated is $1.27 million in base rents and $420,000 in customer facility charges. The alternative is to approve the agreements or do not approve the agreements, and staff supports Alternative 1, provides continued excellent service to customers, provides a consistent line of business revenue for the Colleen Regional Airport. Recommendation is to approve the rental car agreements with the aforementioned companies and authorize the city manager or designated to execute same as well as any and all amendments as allowed per federal, state, and local law. Pending any questions.
Thank you. There are no questions. Madam Secretary.
RS 23204, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the purchase of library books from Ingram Library Services through the Texas Smart Buy Cooperative Purchasing Program for FY 2023-24 in an amount not to exceed $90,000.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Good evening, Ms. McNair.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Council, City Manager, Assistant City Manager. We're going to go through the background. We have only six slides for you this evening. The state of Texas approved.
Could you please introduce?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. This is the Director of Library Service, and longtime Colleen employee. I'm impressed she's put in over 30 years with the city of Colleen. Almost 30. Mrs. Deanna Frazee.
Thank you. Good evening to you, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you for that. The state of Texas approved TechSmart Buy contracts with seven vendors for library books in 2020. In October 2023, the state exercised an option to renew the contracts through October 31 of 2024. Ingram Library Services contract offers the highest discounts on library materials and the formats used by the Colleen Library. This table here does a comparison of the discounts offered, and Colleen is, I'm sorry, Ingram is bolded so that you can see the emphasis on the discounts offered there. Conformity and financial impact. This conforms to the city of Colleen purchasing policy. The reoccurring expense, the current-year expenditure is not to exceed $90,000. Future-year expenditure is based on annual appropriation is estimated at $90,000 to $95,000 annually. Alternatives are to choose a different company offering a lower discount from the list approved by TechSmart Buy vendors for library materials. The other alternative is to approve purchasing library materials through Ingram Library Services through the TechSmart Buy program due to the higher discounts offered. Staff recommends the city council authorize the purchase of library books through Ingram Library Services for the duration of the current TechSmart Buy contract in the amount not to exceed $90,000 in fiscal year 23 to 2024.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have a question now.
I just got a quick question because it was asked in citizen comments. Who decides on the books that are purchased?
Mrs. Frazee. Thank you. The library has a collection development policy. Several of our staff share that responsibility, all supervisory staff. We each take a different area, and we review through standardized review tools used across most libraries in the country. We look at those. We consider community standard as well. And if we get positive reviews, that's one of the first things. And then, the need, not every book is needed in our area. Wouldn't buy a book on sheep shearing or gardening in New York, since it wouldn't be applicable here. We look at that. We look at what the community tends to read. I'm going to tell you murder mystery is probably the number-one thing here, and that's what we do to select. We also want people to take responsibility for what their children read. We can select, but we cannot act in the place of the parent. So, we hope that parents will come in with their children and help them choose materials. We make recommendations more like homework help-type things, or if your child likes Dear Dumb Diaries, which is wildly popular with the young ones, they might like another similar series. But beyond that, we need the parent to be involved, and to that end, we require a parent to sign for a child to have a library card. We have a rather strict policy on that. If your child's a minor, a parent must sign.
And a last question. Do you know if the other surrounding cities are doing the Texas Smart Buy as well? There's a follow-up question to that, too.
Most of the Texas libraries use that because it's easier than us going out and contracting, and we can get better deals.
And because of that, are we part of a coalition where we can transfer?
We participate in our library loan, so as long as you're a citizen of Colleen and have one of our cards and you're in good standing, you do have to be a member of the library for six months, but we can borrow through another library for you if it's something we don't have. Like, we don't keep some of the very old stuff that's, you know, once popular but lost popularity. We don't have space. So, you can borrow it from another library.
Now, the actual last question. What about access to the colleges?
Colleges participate in our library loan, and I should say, Temple, Colleen, Harker Heights allow county-wide borrowing. You can have a card from each other, and Corpus Cove extended that to Colleen residents this year because we've extended it to them for nearly 28 years now.
Thank you.
And also, thank you, Councilmember Adams. I just want to follow up on one of his questions. If by happen chance a parent come across a book that's inappropriate, you have the authority to send that book back, correct? How does that work?
Well, we can withdraw the book. What we do is we review it to make sure, because everybody's standards are different. We do review, and depending on the age of the book, most likely would just be withdrawn and sent to salvage. Because once we've processed it, we've added our labels and things, and we could not send it back at that point.
Yes, ma'am. And we're not challenging your 30 years of experience. As piggybacking, Councilmember Adams, that question was proposed.
Right.
And I would just want to make sure that individual had clarity, that if that did happen,
Right.
we would dispose of it.
If, if the challenge has grounds, and we do have a process, that people can come in, fill out a form.
That's what I was looking, the process. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And I know, I know this is not your first rodeo. So, I just wanted you to go more in detail to explain to citizen, because my only concern, when we come up, oh, excuse me, when we come in the dais and we get on that mic and we send something in the atmosphere for people that's not involved with the daily operation of the city or how a city function as a whole and the, and the, the safety procedures that's put in place. And if you don't interact with that, once someone says it, it's out there. And it's important to this council, I can say, the image, the image of the city. So, I know. I got to get my thoughts in here. Y'all been talking all night. And I just wanted to say, we're not questioning you, but I just want to ensure that, that's all.
And we're glad you're engaged. We want And we're glad you're engaged. We want people to be engaged with us.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
As Councilmember Segar, oh, no, that's all. We don't have any more questions. He was just telling me, he ready to go home.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Boe gave me that, uh, so that means cut it, Mayor. We wanna get out of here. Okay, but I just wanted to make sure we answered, um, Mr. Price's question. That's important. All right, Madam Secretary.
RS twenty-three two-zero-five. Consider a memorandum resolution accepting the Victims of Crime Act Voca Crisis Assistance Program grant through the Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Division.
Thank you so much. Uh, good evening, Assistant Chief Guehart.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, up for consideration is the FY twenty-four Voca Grant, the Victims of Crime Act Grant. Uh, this is a, an annual event that we do. Uh, the city has accepted this grant, uh, a few years in a row now, and we're continuing that program. Uh, what the grant does is it allows for the continuation of our crisis assistance program. Uh, it will provide funding for continued professional counseling services, emergency financial assistance, temporary shelter services for safety of victims of violent crime. It also funds the salary for a clerk that helps to facilitate all those, all those actions of the crisis assistance program. Uh, the total grant award to the city is ninety-five thousand seventy-six dollars and forty-four cents. Uh, there's no matching requirement for the city, no matching funds requirement at all. Uh, of course, the alternatives are to decline the grant and discontinue the program or to accept the grant. Uh, and staff does recommend accepting the grant, um, and allowing the city manager or the executive director of finance to let the screen go dark. Um, and there's also some, uh, mandatory language in there for the grant that's included in the, in the staff report, and that includes things like, uh, the city has, is responsible for matching funds. In this case, there are none. Uh, any misuse of funds, the funds will be returned to the Office of the General, Office of the Governor. Uh, the kind of required language is also included in there.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
There are no questions for you. Madam Secretary.
RS twenty-three two-zero-six. Consider a memorandum resolution ratifying expenditures related to the emergency remediation for the sewer main break at lift station number twenty in the amount of seventy-two thousand seven hundred ninety-nine dollars.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Good evening, Mr. Kanye.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. Hopefully, we will get something up here quick.
Say no? Okay. No, sir. He says stand by. Please wait. So they having some technical difficulties up there, so we're gonna take a five-minute
Again, good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. On June the fourth of this, this, of two thousand twenty-three, the city was made aware of a forced main sewer line break at lift station number twenty. That's a lift station that's on the far southwest side of the city. City staff arrived on the scene and shut down the lift station and began to dig. They dug through, through the night, um, quickly began to realize that the problem was gonna be beyond the scope of work that they could handle. The Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, the TCEQ, was notified as well that evening, and they began to start scheduling, being able to come out and help and assist us, especially with the testing. For the next three days, there was many different departments within the city of Colleen, S&amp;M, Vacuum and Waste, um, TTG Utilities, Rams Pump and Waterwell Service, Biochem, TCEQ, and Bell County Emergency Management Coordinators that were utilized to help us with the repair and remediation, um, of that sewer main break. On June the seventh, the repairs were completed, the lift station was put back online, and the sewer collection system was back in normal operations. We, the, we continued to test the water from within the creek, and then on July the fifth, the TCEQ sent in confirmation that the city was able to cease the, the testing for bacteria and dissolved oxygen. The total for the cost for the remediation was seventy-two thousand seven hundred ninety-nine dollars. There are basically two alternatives for this. One is to deny, um, the ratification of these expenses or to approve the ratification of the expenses. City Council, our staff comes before you, um, asking City Council to approve the ratification of the emergency purchase for remediation services and testing performed by various contractors in the amount of seventy-two thousand seven hundred ninety-nine dollars. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. There are no questions for you. You have the next item, too. Madam Secretary.
RS twenty-three two-zero-seven. Consider a memorandum resolution ratifying an emergency remediation service and testing for paint cleanup, disposal, and testing in Little Nolan Creek by CG Environmental in the amount of one hundred fifty-five thousand three hundred, uh, excuse me, one hundred fifty-five thousand three hundred six dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Connor.
Yes, ma'am. This is, uh, another ratification of expenses that were needed for another emergency situation that the city faced this, this year, and it was that on March the twenty-third, and Little Nolan Creek became contaminated after three five-gallon buckets of paint were tossed into the creek. After meeting onsite and confirming with the TCEQ, staff reached out to CG Environmental for assistance with the waste removal, the disposal, water sampling, and reporting services. CG Environmental is an Austin-based company who provides hazardous and non-hazardous material cleanup services. The total for the, the expenses with CG Environmental to provide the labor, equipment, and supplies was one hundred fifty-five thousand and three hundred and six dollars. The alternatives for this one as well is to either deny the ratification of those emergency expenses or to approve the ratification of the emergency expenses. Staff recommends that City Council approve the ratification of the emergency purchase for remediation services and testing performed by CG Environmental in the amount of one hundred fifty-five thousand three hundred and six dollars, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. I have a question. Did a notice have to go out to, to the public because of that or just that area?
The, where the, the spill took place was the intersection of Cunningham and Elms, just a little bit south of that, in the creek that crosses Cunningham right there. It, it flowed through the creek, the water kind of pushed it, then northward for about three to four hundred feet, cross Elms, and into the property of, um, First Methodist Church. And so throughout the entire process of the remediation, staff, city staff was in contact with, uh, First United Methodist, uh, about everything that was going on with that. So really, that was the only public that was impacted by that spill.
All right. Thank you. Uh, oh, oh, wow. Uh, Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Kanye, for the presentation.
Sure.
Um, do you, or were you able to find out, or do you know if the paint was, was it latex paint or was it oil-based paint?
Right. I asked that question, and, um, they, they never did, were able to figure it out.
Okay. I only ask because, you know, latex is water-based, so it--
Right, right. You wouldn't think that it would be that. Um, the city really relied upon the, the expertise of CG Environmental--
Gotcha.
--as they do so much of this.
Oh, yeah.
So they, we kind of stood back and relied on--
I'm assuming we have no information as to who dumped it, you know, it's not a monitored area, so.
No, that's another great question. It would have been great to be able to know that information, but we do not.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Boe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Kanye. Uh, I just want to note that, uh, this was some expensive remediation, uh, for fifteen-gallon paint spill at a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. The previous item, agenda item, was seventy-two thousand to repair a broken forced main sewer line which was discharging into Reese Creek, and that seemed like a more significant issue. So my question is just, is this pricing, uh, based, uh, on CG Environmental's invoice a standard for emergency remediation to a water system? Is that common?
I, I don't have any experience to be able to answer that question. I know I did look at the itemized, um, expense statement that we received, and I know one of the things that really jumped out at me, I mean, they, they pulled out ninety-five thousand gallons of, of liquid from the creek. So there was, there was a lot of, of that, there was, you know, a lot of other equipment that they had to move in to be able to do this work. Um, again, I, I think one of these situations, you pay for, for what you get, and these were the experts, and, you know, we didn't have a whole lot of experience with that.
Sure.
And again, the TCEQ, TCEQ was very pleased, you know, that we used this company to be able to do this work.
Sure. Understood. Uh, that's, that's another question. Um, what type of fines or, or punishment is in place for this type of activity? Because, of course, we don't want this to continue being so expensive. Uh, what's in place to mitigate this?
Mr. Kegel.
Well, I, I think if we knew who it was, um, we'd file a, a claim with their insurance company, be the quickest way to recover, but, um, I, I'm not for sure exactly how we were even notified, but it's, it's my understanding, it most likely fell off of a, a truck. It doesn't, didn't appear to be intentional or, or someone disposing of the paint that it, that it fell off, and, um, it was long after the fact, so.
Okay. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Boe and Mr. Adams. Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, other questions are already answered. What is this, what is this, what fund does this come from to cover the emergency mediation? Remediation, excuse me.
Yes, this is in our drainage fund.
Okay. Um, and then Councilmember Boe already addressed it about that, but do we have, would that be a local ordinance or reinforcing state law regarding dumping if it came to that point?
I'm sure we have some, some local, you know, within our ordinances and laws to, about, about that, but of, of course, there are a lot of state laws as well as far as of dumping. But I think, as far as City Manager said, I think it was, again, that something as far as of the paint, I don't think it was malicious of somebody going out there and actually dumping it.
Yeah, that was one of my follow-up questions. Are, are we seeing, well, obviously not to the point where we're having consistent dumping, but if we're seeing that, uh, is there a way to let us know so we can kind of address what this is, so that we can either, I mean, we have a marketing plan to start telling people, hey, no dumping. I know we don't have those signs up here, we don't have major waterways, um, but I know that, like, in the East Coast, anything flowing to the Chesapeake, you see signs that say this is a Chesapeake Bay flow, but I, I want to belay the point, I'll come to y'all and ask you some other questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you. Want to just, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. So just a quick question, you might have already touched on this, but just for clarity, um, how long will they have to test the area, the water downstream? Is there a requirement by TCEQ for a length of time for testing?
There, there was, again, and this was all handled by CG Environmental as far as the testing as well. Um, and again, the support that we received from the TCEQ, I think a lot of that was, again, because of the relationship probably that they have with this environmental company. And so they were, they were just going by the book as far as in how they were to handle
Thank you, Councilwoman Gonzalez. Mayor Pro Tem, God.
Sir, thank you for your report. However, my question is, was there anyone hurt during this time? Did you receive anything from any citizen saying that there was a health problem or anything?
No, ma'am. I've never heard of anything about that.
Nothing was received. And the cleanup is over, and the water is still being tested, and all is well?
Um, the water was tested for a period of time, and then, once that happened, then there was not need for, basically, there was a release, so there's not a need for testing anymore after that.
So with this dumping, all is well?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Though there is no more questions. Madam Secretary.
RS twenty-three two-zero-eight. Consider a memorandum resolution declaring a vacancy on the Arts Commission and appointing a new member to fill the vacancy.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Council, you should have a package with, uh, names, um, individuals that apply for that position. If not, if you don't have one, there's one missing. You can pass him on. Uh, Councilmember Segar. You have one? Okay. All right. Attorney Clemens, the floor is yours, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. This is the Arts Commission vacancy item. So a little bit of background, the city of Colleen has various citizen boards, commissions, and committees that serve in advisory capacity, and appointed members are expected to attend the group's meetings regularly. Section two dash one-one-eight of the Code of Ordinances outlines procedure for removal of a member for excessive absences, and in October of this year, the Arts Commission Chairperson pursuant to that ordinance did send a letter to the City Manager's Office notifying staff that one of the commissioners had missed over twenty-five percent of the meetings in a twelve-month period, and requested Council declare the position vacant and assign a replacement for the position. Uh, so your alternatives are to not declare a vacancy or to declare a vacancy and appoint a person to fill the Arts Commission vacancy. Um, the, the member is Ashley Rudser, and, um, she currently holds the Representative of Dance Drama Writing, um, position. However, we do know that a current, um, a current, another current member, Kristen Wright, also, um, can meet that requirement, so you actually can fill this vacancy with any of the applicants, um, so in your package. So you do have, um, that current, in your packet, you have Ms. Wright's application, um, but she would, she could fill, um, the, the Dance Drama Writing representative, and then you could fill the vacancy, if you did declare a vacancy, with any of the other four applicants. And so what we're looking for tonight is if you have a recommendation--
I do. Uh, Councilmember Segar has a recommendation. And that's taking into consideration Kristen Wright will move in the other position.
Yeah.
So who is the person you recommend?
No, no, that was it, because I, I looked at the application, she had the most qualifications there, so that was gonna be my recommendation and my, I didn't know if you guys needed a motion in direction.
You need one more, right, but you need one more person. Yes. Boe, you had your hand, I mean, Councilman Boe.
I support the same name.
But we still need one more person.
That's my mistake. Uh, I'll pass it on to the next person who has a nomination then.
Councilwoman Gonzalez. Okay.
To nominate Tramon Cannon, who's a new resident who'd like to get involved in our--
Thank you. All in favor? Uh, one, two, three, four. All right, that's the person.
Tramon.
All right, did you get that? Did you get that?
I did.
Okay, thank you. Madam Secretary.
Madam Mayor, real quick, so the, for the record, it'll show that we moved one person over and--
That's what he stated, and, uh, Wright went over, and we went with, uh, well, you guys went with Councilwoman Gonzalez counting.
And, and just, just for clarification, they don't have to live in the city of Colleen for this?
Not for this board.
Okay, because, yeah, he doesn't live there.
It's not a, it's not a requirement in the ordinance or the state.
Thank you so much. Any more questions on that? All right, Madam Secretary.
RS twenty-three two-zero-nine. Consider a memorandum resolution granting an operating authority to Ambiance Limousine and Transportation LLC.
Thank you, Madam Secretary.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, tonight for discussion, I have an application from Ambiance Limousine and Transportation LLC for operating authority. Chapter twenty-nine of the Code of Ordinances provides that an individual must obtain operating authority approved by council by submitting application, fee, and supporting documentation. Once approved, the operating authority is valid for five years and is not transferable. Each vehicle must display a vehicle permit obtained from the city secretary's office for-- renewed by December 31st each year. Drivers must also obtain a driver's permit from the police department. An application received from Ambiance Limousine and Transportation LLC on November 20th, 2023, met all of those requirements. They listed three vehicles that would fall under their operating authority for limousine and shuttle transportation. The application is complete and complies with the City of Colleen's Code of Ordinances. There are no city expenditures associated with ground transportation operating authority. The alternatives are to grant the operating authority and allow the applicant to provide transportation services to the citizens of Colleen or not grant the operating authority. Staff recommends the city council grant the operating authority to Ambiance Limousine and Transportation as the application requirements have been met.
There are no comments. And thank you, Madam Secretary. I'll wait till you get back in place. Will be held December the 19th, 2023. Madam Secretary.
P H 23062, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by Carolyn Brown on behalf of 501 503 Powell LLC, case number Z 23 dash 26, to rezone lots two and four and parts of lots, part of lots one and three, block 36 out of the Colleen original town from B 5 Business District to B C 1 General Business and Alcohol District.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, Mr. Rebell, and welcome back.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you to the mayor, to the City Council, City Manager. As was mentioned earlier by one of the people in the public, this is the old HEB site. It's a rezoning request, rezoned property that is currently B 5 to B C 1, which will allow for the on sale, the premise of, on premise sale of alcohol as well as on premise consumption. You all are familiar with the location, so we won't belabor that. We've already stated what the intent is, is to allow for an event center. Surrounding zoning, all B 5, you're familiar with the property and surrounding. The site is also consistent, this request is consistent with the future land use map. It's also consistent with the growth, growth management map. And then also it further several comprehensive plan implementation recommendations will not be labor by reading. In essence, staff is in support of this request because it's consistent with the comprehensive plan as well as the growth sector. Will most certainly activate this area, has already been discussed. All public notification has been accomplished. One written response that's in support of this request to date, that shows the notification And then the council has the alternatives as noted. And staff is recommending approval, again, for B 5 to B C 1, which will allow for the on premise sale and on premise consumption of alcohol. This case was heard by the planning and zoning commission on November 20th and by a vote of six to one, to, they voted for, for, to recommend approval. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Rebell. There's no questions for you. Once again, the public hearing will be held on December 19th, 2023. Items for, for discussion, discussion at workshop, council, council, you have five minutes each to speak two times each. Madam Secretary.
D S 23117, receive quarterly financial report.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Welcome back, Ms. Tanglin.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, councilmembers. Okay. So we're going to talk about the end of fiscal year 2023. Let me just remind you that these numbers are estimated, they're not audited. I will come back on March with the final numbers, but they're really close. This is the overview, the executive dashboard with the staffing indicators, economic indicators. We're going to review the major operating funds and then the, and ARPA funding update. For the executive dashboard, these are the personnel that we have separations for fiscal year 23, total 265, but we did higher, 270, sorry, 289. So we're playing catch up. You see the year-to-date turnover ratio over here? And then you can see the four quarter numbers here and this is the year-to-date. For a new construction permit in fiscal year 22, we have 613 and in fiscal year 23, we have 426 single-family residential. And then I go into the sales tax information. For fiscal year 23, we actually collect 25.1 million. And in fiscal year 2022, we collect 23.8 millions in comparison to the prior fiscal year. This is, you will see the annual sales tax information by months for the last five years. And here's your breakdown of sales tax by the economic category. Now we're going to go into the major funds, general fund. I want to talk about the investment earnings. Actually, last fiscal year, we had 1.2 million at the end of fiscal year 2022. In comparison, this year, we have 7.8. That was an increase of 6.6 million in interest revenues. We see the general fund revenue this fiscal year, we collected 100% of our revenues. We only 79% in intergovernmental, and that is because some ARPA funds were not recognized as a revenue because we haven't expended yet. So you will also see that we didn't spend the ARPA funds and expenditure size. Then here's your expenditures. We expended 95% of our budget. And in fiscal year 23, we'll end up with 121.25 million. And here's your fund balance. Your next change was 3.42 million, with your fund balance ending with 20.3. We have an estimated encompasses that we probably will carry over, having an estimated fund balance of 29.49. That is a 25.5% fund balance reserve calculating expenditures for fiscal year 2024. If you want to know what is the amount over or the fund balance reserve that we have for general fund is almost $4 million this fiscal year. Now for water and sewer fund revenues, we did, collected 102% of the operating revenues and we spent 96% when it comes to operating revenues. And you'll see the contributions and transfers is 100%. And then all operating revenues and expenses, we actually collect a little bit more than we estimated. But our net position ending is 12.62, is a 27.8% of the fund balance reserve, of working capital reserve. This is our chart for the water revenues versus rainfall for the, for quarter comparison. Now, now we're going to move into the solid waste fund. For the solid waste fund for fiscal year 23, the operating revenues 109% and we spent 96% of the budget. The net position beginning 6.4 and we ended with 7.5, 23% over the fund balance reserve. Now the drainage, it's the same. We collected 100% of revenues. We only spent 85% of expenses and our net position ending was 1.79 and it's at 27.3% of the fund balance reserve. And aviation funds, we did a little bit lower. We only collected 90% of the operating revenues. We did spend only 88% also. Our net position ending was 1.75 and we still have a 24% of our fund balance reserve. For our hotel occupancy tax fund, we, we, total revenues, we only collected 95%, but we only spent 84% of our budget. Your fund balance ending was 2.2 million dollars and we do have some estimated encompasses about 130,000, with your estimated fund balance to be 2.10. We still have a fund balance reserve of 29.5%. We have our street maintenance fund. We collected 102% of our revenues. We spent 78% of our budget. The next change, the next change was 4.4 million with the fund balance ending on 9.26. We don't have a requirement for fund balance reserve for the maintenance fund because there's no operational expenses there. They're just capital expenses. And that's all with the major funds. Now a quick update in the ARPA funding. For the hotel occupancy approved uses, we already spent $858,000 out of the 2.5 million that we have appropriated. The, the project that we were waiting for is for age back replacement. For the general fund, we have spent 6.8 million out of the 7.6 million that we appropriated. For the CIP fund, we have only spent 3.5 out of the 17.8 and it's because you see the, the big amount, the 12 million dollars for the E O C. We will see it's on construction this year, so that money is going to be started spending. And the final total, we had spent 11.5 out of the 29.1 million, that's about 40% that we have spent in ARPA funds. You have any questions? I'm more happy to answer that.
I just, are there any ARPA grantees in danger of not spending? Or any programs on ARPA that we?
We have a, an ARPA fund meeting every Wednesday, first Wednesday every month, just to monitor the projects. And right now, we are monitoring very closely because we know our deadline. And then actually, we have a little, you know, the, the guidance changed a little bit. Now we have until 2026 to spend the funds, but we have to have an agreement by December 2024. So anything has to be, everything has to encumber, we have to have an agreement to be able to keep those funds. And we don't see that we're going to go that far, maybe only with the E O C. But besides that, we are monitoring the ARPA funds really closely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I apologize. Did you say the E O C?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim.
I'm not sure if I missed something. The maintenance barn was not coming out of the funding?
No, ma'am.
No, ma'am, that's out of the C O. And you will have, you've had one action item for design on the FBO and you'll have a group that's coming up in February for another group of projects out of the C O.
Okay. I know they're laughing at me, but that means a lot to me. You all know that barn means a lot because when we have people who are giving their time and their energy to this city, I want to ensure that they have the right, that they have the air, the heat, the seating, and whatever else they may need because our city looks good because of the people who work with us.
Are there any more comments? Thank you, Madam Pro Tim. Thank you, Mrs. Tanglin.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary.
D S 23118, discuss fireworks for downtown Independence Day festival.
Thank you. Good evening, Chief Lopez, I mean, Chief Kabinsky and Mr. Hamilton. Will he be in here with you, Chief?
Yes, ma'am. He should be coming in shortly. All right.
So we'll wait until he come in and we just take a, a little two-minute break until somebody get. You see that, Chief? You saw that? I was in action, like.
Perfect timing.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hamilton. The floor is yours.
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, City Manager. This item that we're going to be discussing is to, you know, get some direction from you all concerning our fireworks display for 2024. I'll just start with a little bit of background here. So as you all know, in 2021, the City of Colleen allocated ARPA funding for downtown events to promote foot traffic and economic growth in the area. During that same year, we created and established five signature events, Motown and Downtown, Celebrate Colleen, Independence Day, Stravaganza, Touchdown in Downtown, and Holiday Under the Stars. In that same year, we also, you know, in planning for the fireworks show, we did multiple site recon in some areas. And it was decided that to launch the fireworks from the Colleen Athletic Complex was the best decision at that time because it allowed us to accommodate a larger fireworks show. But it also created a distance of over a mile between the viewing area of downtown from the lunching site. Over the past two years, we've saw an estimated of 6,200 people. Let me say that again, over the past two years, we saw growth. The first year that we did it, we had about 2,000 people that came out to the event in downtown. And just this year, we saw an estimated amount of 6,200 people that showed up and attended the fireworks show in downtown Colleen. So after we concluded the event this year, staff got together, we created some surveys, sent them out to vendors, downtown merchants, and we compiled their feedback both in person and online. And we got some positive feedback, which included, you know, one, it was great for businesses in downtown Colleen. They loved the diversity of the festival entertainment. We had new visitors that came into downtown to that event and we had citywide visibility of the fireworks show. They did give us some recommendations through that as well. And one was to host the event on July 4th or change the name of the festival. Or we could consider launching the fireworks show closer to downtown Colleen or move the festival to the lunch location. In October of this year, staff met with the downtown advisory subcommittee for events and we brought this same thing to them as well and they gave us some recommendations. One of those recommendations was to keep the festival on the first Saturday in July, but rename it Red, White, and Blues Music Festival with the addition of keeping the event downtown to support the businesses, but change the location for the launching if possible to downtown Colleen. Later on in that same month, we set up a meeting with the pyrotechnician who has been doing our fireworks show. And we did a site recon in downtown Colleen to see if we can find some alternative locations that were closer. The only location that was feasible was the area of Fourth and Avenue B for the lunch, but it would limit the size of the shells to a maximum of four inches and firework cakes. So for reference, the past shows for the City of Colleen, we've been utilizing 12-inch shells. And if you ever seen Fort Cavasso's fireworks show, they use four to six-inch shells for their celebration. This right here is just a layout showing you the area of North Fourth Street and East Avenue B. This is the area that was identified as the best location for downtown. One thing I do want to note on this map here is that if it was the pleasure of the council to relocate this to downtown, we could, we would adjust our event and structure and everything to accommodate this location because as it, as it stands now, we use Avenue D. This map right here, just a graphic, just to show you the, the impact of the shells. As you can see here, the higher they go, the more visible they are. So we'll get into a little bit of the pros and the cons of each scenario here. The advantages of the fireworks show in the park would be that we would maintain the claim of hosting the largest fireworks show in central Texas by continuing to utilize 12-inch shells. The 12-inch shells allows for a larger view around the city for those that are not at the event. And it's also been deemed the safest location to launch a high-impact show. The disadvantages, however, would be that there are obstructions such as buildings and trees between the park and downtown, which makes the fireworks not as visible from Avenue D. And as I mentioned, Avenue D is the centralized area for the events. And so the most optimal location for viewing for the show in downtown is actually Santa Fe Plaza, which is just a, a street over. It's the best location to view it. Um, it's the best location to view it, however, you still won't get those up-close views as, as you would if you were closer. Also, another disadvantage is the cost of the show. As it stands, the twelve-inch shell show is the largest expense in the downtown event budget. An advantage of doing this in downtown would be we could obtain an up-close view of the fireworks in downtown, we could centralize the festival and the foot traffic to downtown exclusively, uh, there's ample parking opportunities in downtown, um, for the event to grow, and we would greatly reduce the cost of the large show and could reallocate those funds towards bigger entertainment acts, um, for festivals such as Celebrate Colleen or Holiday Under the Stars. The, um, disadvantage is we would lose the citywide impact of the fireworks show and the claim of the largest show in central Texas. Uh, we also have limited locations to lunch from in downtown, and smaller, we would have to reduce to a smaller fireworks-size show, as the larger shells may cause damage to windows and buildings in the downtown area. So the alternatives here is, we're, we're seeking a recommendation from the council for, on how you would like us to proceed with this event. Um, the alternatives are, we keep the fireworks display at the Colleen Athletic Complex and continue hosting the event downtown, uh, we can move the fireworks display to downtown with specific requirements, or we can keep the fireworks display at the Colleen Athletic Complex, but move the entire event out of downtown. Um, and before I answer any questions, I want to turn it over to our Fire Chief Kabinsky to give further considerations.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, and members of council. Some additional considerations I'd like to provide with regards to considering downtown fireworks. Um, when we look at the map here, on a four-inch shell, so the, the, um, in order to approve the permit, not only does the Fire Marshal for City of Colleen approve the permit based on shell sizes, but also the state Fire Marshal. Um, so they oversee and make sure that what we are approving also meets their conditions. When we talk about a four-inch shell size, the minimum, minimum secured diameter of the site is five hundred and sixty circular feet, so a diameter of five hundred and sixty feet. That would mean the secured site area would go through this whole area here. That's important to note, because in order to do that, the buildings that are within that range, seven different buildings, would have to have specific authorized written presi- permission to have the fireworks within the five hundred and sixty-feet circle, and again, that's the foreign shells, and they would have to be vacant for the entire time that the shells are downtown. Uh, secondly, the code that we follow, N F P A eleven twenty-three, states that the fallout area shall be an open area. It cannot have any buildings or structures underneath it. Problem with that is, if we have one shift in wind, so even if they shoot from this area here, straight up in the air, we have an open lot here, open lot here, open lot here, if the wind shifts by one mile per hour to this direction, we have to call off the fireworks show, and we can't make that decision until the night of with the Fire Marshal representative that's out on the scene. So there are some considerations and concerns, uh, because the fallout has to be into an open field area. We don't want to take on the risk of any, um, prematurely detonated shells that explode, and now we have, um, those shells and that fire hazard that's on top of buildings. We want to be very cautious of that. So those are some additional considerations I did want to share with the council, as, um, you consider Mr. Hamilton's recommendations for fireworks display.
Thank you, Chief, and Mr. Hamilton, for your, your time and your presentation. We have some questions from our council, but first person is Councilman Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, just a couple of comments. But first, I want to say thank you all for the, doing the survey and for the research, you know? This is something where we could have just continued with the same pattern and didn't seek feedback, uh, but this is, this is awesome. Uh, when I attended last year, I was downtown and waiting for the fireworks, and when they shot off, everyone had to look the specific direction, I think it was east, to watch them, you know, and my preference was that they were, you just can just look up and see them, but I understand that's where we had, had it established. I would say to, uh, to move it to downtown, uh, to keep with the momentum downtown, there's things going on, you can see, and then transition straight into looking up and seeing the fireworks, uh, but when you just mentioned the fallout area, that kind of just changed my whole consideration, because safety, uh, is everything. Um, so that's something for the council to decide, um, but as far as the name of the, the changing the name or moving it to that date, I like that we leave that date open for folks to really determine what they want to do on Fourth of July, uh, but I do like the recommendation of moving it to that first weekend, if that's what I remember, and changing the name to Red, White, and, uh, Blue, Blues, uh, Music Festival, where we can showcase talent, and people can expect, uh, a good day of music in addition to their celebration downtown during that time, and those are my comments.
Thank you, Councilman Boyd. Our next speaker is Councilman Adams.
Thank you, ma'am. I, I, I like the idea of it being a whole Colleen fireworks show, but if you really want to party or enjoy Colleen, you're coming downtown, uh, because every other place that have done fireworks, it's a, like a regional, and I like the idea of us still getting the nomin, the name, best show in town, because that will also bring people, that's like, oh, fireworks, but oh, they also got something downtown, so I can see how they, and I, inner, inner lace, excuse me, my tongue is tied. Um, now, the safety issue is a major concern, which is why we're still supporting being a little distance, because the last thing we want is a new fireworks show, and everybody looking downtown, there's a large fume of smoke coming up in the air, because now we have scorched earth the downtown to have to rebuild in the first place, and we don't want that. Um, I know we have old buildings, but that is the last format to do that, and part, I know it's getting late, now, I'll behave. Um, but I, I like the name staying the change, staying the same, but also with the safety considerations, I, and who knows, starting February, we go up to a hundred-degree weather that goes until next December. I'm not asking for that, but it's still a possibility, uh, so I know that, that is a consideration of the dryness too, but that would even affect that area by athletic facility, but that, the safety concern is the biggest thing, because that could, that could increase the cost.
If I could add some, uh, additional consideration, both fireworks displays that have been held at the community center, we have had, uh, three booster trucks that were on-site, and we did have fires spark in some brush areas, uh, both times, small fires, they were mitigated quickly, but we have, it, so it's not even, uh, something that we're supposing could happen, there's a high likelihood that something like that could happen.
And you had a response plan, I remember the one that I went to a couple of years ago, uh, only complaint was that some animals were upset about the fireworks, but again, this, wherever you have an animal, there's fireworks is gonna happen. Um, so I, I, like I said, I like the, the name changes Councilmember Boyd's had, and I, I would prefer the, this is, I, maybe try to mitigate something, or maybe we do the parade down V and B, I don't know, um, but I don't want to go and make an assage for that right now, but thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Adams. We will now hear from Councilman Solomon.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protem. You know, last year, I had a chance, uh, I really enjoyed myself down there, but it was downtown, I'm sorry, this year. Um, and it was, it was great, and I had a chance to be downtown and then leave and see the fireworks from another view position from off of, well, one ninety, and then I was headed south to home. I saw it from the hill of Applebee's, and, um, I thought it was so fantastic that the, the entire city could see it, and I think it would be nice to keep it there, uh, there at the, uh, community center, because pe- some people will not come downtown, or may not, can't make it, or they'll leave early from downtown, from the celebration, um, and, uh, they'll be able, everybody be able to see it, it's not just for those who come downtown, it's for the entire city, and so I think that would be great if we could just keep it there, that, that would be my suggestion, and whatever name you want to name it, I, I think that's great too, but to see those fireworks, wherever you are at in the city, you can see it, and you can see, and to have those, when you said twelve inches round, it's just, I guess, they're the largest ones, I mean, it's spectacular, I mean, I was just, I was just so proud of our city to see that we've had fireworks, I've never seen that, I mean, we, we used to go into Fort Cavasso to see the fireworks, but to say Colleen has fireworks, uh, and they have a, a good show, it's, it's, it's good to see. So I think that, that Colleen Center would be great, um, not only for the show, but for security and for, um, to protection, and being able to put anything that happens out, I mean, fire that comes up, sparks, you can be able to do it, you can handle it there. That's my opinion, that's my suggestion.
Thank you, Councilman Solomon. We will now hear from Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Thank you. That's just awesome, the, the amount of, uh, foot traffic that we've been able to create down there, and the work that you and your team, and you and your team have put in this event, as well as all of our others, this is a huge accomplishment for us, for our city. Um, so to Councilman Solomon's point, um, I definitely feel that being the largest, having that spectacular show, and being able to see it across the city is extremely important, um, that will also, that's our unifier right there, one of the many ways of many, hopefully. So, um, I, I'm in favor of also keeping it at the complex. Um, I do also agree with, um, the name change and the, um, uh, the date change, you know, adjusting those as we need to, um, but definitely, you know, moving forward with that, keeping it going, keeping it big. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gonzalez. We will now hear from Councilman Segarra.
Thank you, and, uh, I'm in favor of the first one, keeping the fireworks at the Colleen Athletic, continuing to host the event, but I was gonna ask too, and I'm sure you guys done it, have you guys looked at other alternative locations? Because I think that the issue you mentioned is that when you're having those events in downtown, you can't really see it from downtown, and so, um, have you looked at like other areas, like Conder Park, it might be, you know, I don't even know if it's big enough, but places like that, other areas around the downtown area?
Yes, sir, so the, the first year, um, we did look at Conder Park, and at that time, uh, the power technician said that there was a possibility of shooting it there, however it is, he mentioned like the blast radius is still very close to a residential neighborhood, and so there was still some, um, concerns that the power technician had, so, but that was one of the parts that we did look at. Uh, we first actually started out in downtown to see if there were some locations that was viable at that time, um, and we just ended up at the Colleen Athletic Complex being the best location.
Yeah, no, and I like it there, because I, I, I know I really didn't get a chance to go to downtown during the day last year, but I did get an opportunity to see the fireworks right there off of W S Young, and there was a lot of people parked there, and I don't think that we would be able to fit all those people, uh, in that downtown area if you did that, because they were parked pretty much right there on Veterans Memorial and just going all the way down, and so I'm in favor of, of that recommendation, number one, and, uh, as far as, um, you know, the fourth and all that, I like having it on a weekend, so I think that's a good idea, having it first Saturday of the month, it's almost be like, like, uh, a habit, you know, like our Christmas parade, I know that citizens got used to having it at, what, what is it, the first or the second Saturday every year? The second, right? And so they get a habit of that, and that's what creates that attraction, especially if you start getting people from out of town, and it starts growing, they understand this is what's, when we're gonna have it on this, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Segarra, and we have a guest, please.
So I, I just wanted to, you know, make the council aware too, that, um, with the decision you guys are leaning towards, we have kind of discussed some solutions for downtown, and so as I mentioned, um, Santa Fe Plaza is the area that has the best viewing, um, and so we could be a lot more intentional with letting citizens know and putting signs and placeholders there in downtown, so people can transition safely to that location prior to the fireworks show taking place, so that is something that we have discussed as a potential resolve.
Right, and our last councilman for the, for this subject, Councilman Boyd.
Just a follow-up question, uh, for those who want to view the fireworks close at, uh, over there by the community center, is there parking available for them, or folks just kind of parking on the side of the road?
Uh, being on-site here, the, the last couple of shoots, unfortunately, uh, with the construction, it limits the parking lot that's on the upper level, I don't know what the date is of expectation for that being completed. Um, that was a full lot, we do have some ability on that lower lot that's just off of W S Young, um, that's outside of the, um, the secured area, and probably about the back third closest to W S Young that can be, um, added for secured parking.
Okay, okay. I'm wondering if there's a place where folks can leave downtown and congregate to where they're closer to the fireworks, but I don't know where that might be.
The community center is definitely, uh, the, the park itself, the dog park, uh, on the other side of W S Young, and that parking lot there as well, um, are definitely within, uh, the safe area of being able to get a good view. Uh, we would just have to set predetermined limits, uh, because once you fill up that lot, it's gonna be full, so we'd have to make sure that people know, and there's probably gonna be upset people if they try to make that transition and are told that there's no room at the end here.
Okay, uh, I'd like to see if we can, uh, kind of make that possible, uh, because I know when I was there this year, thanks for correcting that, Councilman Solomon, um, I wanted to jump in the car and get closer, right? Uh, but, but couldn't do that because of traffic and all that other stuff. My, and what I was getting at is, if there was an area, larger area for us to congregate, could we consider taking a street and then turning it one way to efficiently get, getting folks from downtown just there for the fireworks show, and then reverse that street to how it needs to be, so that folks can get home, just a, a thought or consideration.
And I would, I don't want to speak for Chief Lopez, but next time I see him, I'll bring it up, uh, they are the traffic management experts, and see, see what ideas we can come up with.
Okay, that's all I got, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Boyd. We now have comments from Councilman Aparaz.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh, while we're having this discussion, I just thought of, you know, downtown, the hike and bike trail extension project connects downtown via Avenue G, um, to the Andy K Wells hike and bike trail, so that may be an opportunity to have, uh, maybe a walking parade or something from downtown via the hike and bike trail along Avenue G to that backside where you can have a great view, I would imagine, right there on Nolan Creek, um, across from the fireworks display, so maybe some opportunity there to think about.
All right, and Councilman Segarra, I think this is your final round, is it?
Well, I wanted, I didn't know if anybody, because I think what you guys are looking for is direction, right, from the council, and so I think that
Yes, sir.
we need like a motion of direction, and I, I make that motion to choose item number one, I think most of the council is for keeping the fireworks display, because we want it to be the biggest fire show in Texas, right? We want to keep those twelve inches, so I make a motion that we keep fireworks display at the Colleen Athletic Complex and continue hosting the event in downtown, and one more thing, right, and it's, uh, doing it Saturday and renaming it, are, are we all in favor of that? So doing it on Saturday and renaming it Red, White, and Blue.
All right, can we get a second? How about Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Second, that please.
All right, thank you, we've received the motion and the second, let us now vote.
Discussion.
I've got a comment, is that your last round, Councilman Boyd?
No, this is a part of discussion, so it's gonna be a different.
Okay, we got a discussion, y'all. Councilman Boyd.
Sure, so the, on the most, yes, the, the presentation had the renaming as Red, White, and Blues Music Festival, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What is the council's thought on it just being Red, White, and Blue Music Festival? Because I think the assumption would be that the music is themed blues. That makes sense? Okay, so what?
We have a motion on the floor. Are you saying to the man?
I'm making an amendment, I should be amending it, it's late, I'm sorry. I like to make a motion to, I like to amend the motion to change the name from Red, White, and Blues Music Festival to Red, White, and Blue Music Festival. Reason being, it could be assumed that the music genre for the event is gonna be blues.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
I can second that amendment, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, we have, uh, amended the motion, we're now ready to vote. Do, would you like to discuss it? Let's discuss it, let's discuss it. Let's start off with you, Councilman Solomon.
Get this thing. Okay, um, Council, um, Councilmember Boyd, you said we're writing blues, blue, just single?
Single, singular, single, just blue.
Okay, okay, I just wanted clarity, so, okay.
All right.
Okay.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Thank you for that, I just want to make sure that, yeah, I think that's a great suggestion, just to have the diversity in music and making sure it's open to all genres, so that's awesome, thank you. Thank you for that, I just want to make sure that, yeah, I think that's a great suggestion, just to have the diversity in music and making sure it's open to all genres, so that's awesome, thank you.
All right. Do anyone else have anything else they would like to say tonight? We are ready to vote. All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. All right. And it's, it's the yes habit, so we're in favor of conducting our blues festival with the amended name. Thank you, Chief Kaminsky. You have what? Oh, that was the amendment, okay, go back to the main motion. Okay, you ready to vote? Vote, I can't clear it, there it is. And again, the yes habit. Thank you for your vote, thank you for your presentation, and thank you both for your service to this city. Madam Secretary?
DS 23120, discuss posting the rules of decorum at the entrances and exits of city council chambers.
Councilman Alvarez, you submitted this information, would you please start?
Sure, thank you, Mayor Protem. So during these past couple of meetings, I had several residents and even some staff members come up to me and state that they were unclear on what the rules of decorum are and that they seem to change. So I thought this would be a good discussion item to hopefully clearly state what those rules for decorum are so there are clear expectations and there's some transparency for the residents attending the meeting.
Counsel, do you have anything that you would like to say on this? If not, we can move forward with the vote to see if we move this discussion item to one of our agendas. Are you ready to vote?
I do have something.
Okay, Councilman Adams.
On that, I think we should also make sure, we clarify if and what forms need to be filled out and we also specify whether they can do it like during the meeting so there's no confusion for anyone as we, oh, I'm sorry, that we have to put this on the agenda first. I move this to be placed on the next work, next.
Agenda, the next agenda.
Yeah, the next agenda.
Can I get a second?
Point of order.
Point of order, yes, sir.
Or point of clarity, if you will. Isn't this a discussion item?
It is a discussion to move it to the agenda. So all we need to do is, you have to decide if you would like to move it over to the agenda. Mr. Adams have given us why he wants it. All I need from our fellow council members is a yea or nay.
I understand, what I'm saying is, it's not written as if this is a request for a future agenda item, am I correct?
You're correct.
Okay, so is this a discussion item or are we voting to move this to a future discussion at a different meeting?
It is a discussion item for a future agenda.
Well, no, because the mayor actually put it on, so.
Actually discussing it now.
You can or you can put it on a future agenda if you would like, you can do either one.
Okay, okay, understood. So just for clarity, this is a discussion we're supposed to be having now, but we have the option, of course, if we want to table it, et cetera. Okay, I'm gonna fall back now, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions and would you like to move, it's already been put on there by the mayor?
Yeah, on this agenda.
Okay, so do we move it forward? We can move it forward at this time. Okay. All right.
I guess I still.
Councilman Solomon.
Well, are we still in discussion?
We're still in discussion, yes, sir.
All right, so Councilman Alvarez, could you explain how you want this to be? You said it's more of a postiness? Explain that again, please.
Yeah, I guess whatever the rules of decorum are for these meetings, just so they're posted for attendees to see it so they know what they are and they don't feel that these standards or rules are changing. And then I think you could expand on that further, like Councilman Adams said, you know, maybe address some of these other processes that are inherent to the meetings as well.
Okay, and so this would be posted at the entries and the exits of the city council? And so it'd be just like a poster on the door of how we should, how they should act?
Correct, it's the same thing that they have at any courthouse that you go to. There's rules of how you should act and present yourself.
Okay.
Councilman Boyd?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I understand why Councilman Alvarez brought this forward and so I'm gonna make a statement to further clarify the need for this. We're here today because citizens across Colleen have expressed deep concerns over decorum and safety during our council meetings. Citizens hear the threats, see the negative gestures, endure verbal disruptions, and witness the open carry of long guns all while the city council is focused on handling city business. I've heard from citizens, guests, out-of-towners who regularly ask similar questions. What is going on at your meetings and how are these same individuals able to create such a stir during your meetings? And it doesn't help with the Colleen Daily Herald publishing articles similar to this one that states crazy has become normal at city council meetings, howl it in, and city council to consider banning guns from council chambers, and then the image of someone making obscene gestures to the council, furthering the narrative. So that's one of the reasons why we're having this conversation. I did want to point out that folks are watching our council meetings online, excuse me, and around the state just to see what's gonna happen next at the next City of Colleen council meeting. The accusations, the outbursts, and the distractions seem to have become a routine sideshow, which is very unfortunate. Ultimately, citizens are concerned about the continued escalation of these behaviors, which have the tendency to spiral out of control. My chief concern is our citizens, city staff, visitors, and council members who participate in these meetings. At this point, we as a council are charged with ensuring, excuse me, ensuring decorum, citizen's safety during our meetings, and conducting the city's business like we have, like we have been, despite a lot of the foolishness. My charge to this council is, let us ensure our discussion revolves around these goals so that we can continue to move our city forward.
Thank you, Councilman Boyd.
That's why we're having this discussion.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Thank you, and I, can we add, you know, Councilmember Adams started touching on a subject as far as process is concerned. For me, that's really important. We've got a lot of new members, we have some actually still hanging on in our audience right now who've never been to a council meeting before. And we had some earlier today, I was very excited to see some new faces. However, they weren't really familiar with the process. So if there is something that would be a clear delineation for them as far as that's a little more understandable or more visible for them to be able to out there, understand what the process is, how do they submit, where do they go? I don't know what that looks like, but I do think it's important for new people coming into our meetings.
Councilman Segarra?
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
You're welcome.
The choice is either do it or don't do it. And so I make a motion that, a motion of direction that we post them and follow Mr. Alvarez's recommendation there.
Can I get a second? Councilman Solomon? Your second?
Second.
Okay, it has been moved in second. We will move forward with DS 23120 discussing posting the rules of decorum to another agenda. Thank you, councilmen. We now are moving, we gotta vote, yeah, let's vote, y'all.
I just want to clarify, my motion is, we don't need a, we're making a decision tonight.
To move forward.
To post them.
Yes, and we will post it to the next agenda.
No.
No?
We don't need an agenda, it's, so the motion is to post them, so staff will get it done and that's it, we don't.
All right, thank you. Okay, Madam Secretary? We gotta vote. Oh, come on.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
All right, the yays have it has been properly moved in second. Thank you, councilmembers. Madam Secretary?
Citizen comments on non-agenda items?
We are now at the portion of citizen comments on non-agenda items. Let us remember that we have three minutes without time allotted for each of our councilmembers. The first person formed that I am looking at is Mr. Michael Farino.
Titled by comments, State of the City. Welcome to Colleen for the newlywed and the nearly dead. And I'll qualify that remark. We are not growing as a city in the way we need to, we're growing by rooftops, there's nothing in the middle.
Mr. Farino, can I have, can you just stop for just one second? Simply because our timer has not, well, has not come on. The timer is now on for our three minutes? No, it's not. It is now on, sir. If you would please restart, I would truly appreciate it.
I thank you for the difference. So the newlywed and nearly dead, people don't come to Colleen, they wind up in Colleen, or they end in Colleen. We have an extraordinary educational base and training base in this town that we are not taking advantage of. From the high schools with something that would have been unheard of when I was in school, the early college program and outstanding vocational technical program, not to mention in, within city limits, the collegiate level of education we have here. When all's said and done, there's no place to use it. I've said this before, earlier remarks, we don't have a middle. We are not growing. Okay? In some neighborhoods, it is not an indictment on the police, but the cost of living is going up and the chances of living is going down. That's sad, but it's true. Read the police blotter, okay? You're all concerned about the image of the city, on decorum, okay? The salary of the city manager was brought up. Okay, I did, did some brief math on this, on workshop nights, we have a budget to provide food for you folks. If each one of you every week at a workshop slapped down 20 bucks, that's over $200 worth of food. You're not starving to death. Nobody in this room generally is. Last week, we had two items on the agenda that topic around the homeless. And there is the display of someone eating food on the dais. We don't have enough money to keep the lights on at Moss Rose, but we have a budget in the city to feed you folks. That's just the pinnacle of unfair. That's have and have not. That's just not right. And then to flaunt it by eating from the dais, and you're talking about our decorum, our respect? You have people in this room last week and probably tonight, that you legitimately have asked them, did you eat today? Or even when's the last time you ate? But we have to provide food for you folks? I mean, that's what it comes down to. I mean, there's, that's not an opinion, that's a fact. We had people in this room last week that, I'm not saying we need to provide them cradle to grave, but that level of priority? We don't have enough money for Moss Rose, the homeless, or all the other programs, but every time the city manager needs a raise or some pet project in this room comes up, oh, that money just falls from the sky. Get it together. I would dare say that, this is hypothetical, not a violent thing, if I were to blindfold some of you and take you to random parts of the city without GPS and a map, you don't know the town, you don't know us, you wouldn't be able to find your way out of those neighborhoods, you don't know them. 168,000 people, 66,000 voters, eight days of voting, only 2,000 show up. That ought to be the real rubric right there, to see exactly how much.
Mr. Farino, thank you for your comments, your time is now up. We will now have a non-agenda item from Dr. Cothran.
I would like to discuss the council's close relationship with the local newspaper. When the mayor sneezes, the newspaper staff hand her a tissue. Never mind that the city manager is often quoted several times a week in a variety of news articles that plant the seed of distrust among the voters. Never mind that the mayor promotes fear and scorn among the residents of Colleen. Never mind the only newspaper in town waits until Sunday to publish four more opinion-based articles, stories that are lean on the one side of half-truths. As an example, this past weekend, it was very interesting, the local newspaper included several articles written by staff members with links to the mayor. Yes, even the letter to the editor was written by a former newspaper staff writer in disguise as a reader from Colleen, a reader from Waco is concerned about Colleen, wow. Staff writer who lives in a different place had their article published. Why else would a newspaper include comments from a person who doesn't live here in order to force the opinion on people? Some would say the mayor is working hand in glove with the local newspaper to prevent constituents from freely exchanging information. Maybe that's why the local newspaper fails to publish many letters to the editor from regular Colleen citizens. Also for the past week, it was very interesting that comments were removed or disabled from the online version of the newspaper. Maybe it's because the mayor doesn't like the commentary against her. In my opinion, the local newspaper does not report a balanced approach of newsworthy events. Instead, the newspaper acts as Debbie Nash's personal newsletter. She continually is featured and quoted several times a day. For example, three weeks ago, the mayor was featured in a two-page article with glowing comments about her life and career. Tell me that wasn't an attempt to sway voters with a free political campaign advertisement. I laugh each time I read stories of falsehoods and quotes from the mayor, such as, "Those disruptive men who were charged in the diast when I only stood up and left the room." Another quote, "I need an armed escort to my car at night." Lady Mayor, you're the only dangerous person in the city right now. Voters of Colleen, keep this in mind, the First Amendment protects the right of people to exercise free speech and self-expression. The Second Amendment lays out the right of individuals to keep arms. The Fifth Amendment gives protection of rights, liberty, and property. Voters of Colleen, the city council is slowly moving down the list of your rights and taking them away. People of Colleen, we need to vote these crooked people out of office. If not, they will continue taking away your rights as a citizen in Colleen. Lastly, I would like to show, again, let's refer back to the City of Colleen Quality Quarterly Investment Report. Talks about the funds, if you look in the very corner that was kind of glossed over by your speaker, it does reflect $4.1 million loss for the City of Colleen. Thanks for glossing over that.
Thank you for your comment. Mr. Cagle, thank you.
That is false. I explained it, there is, there is no loss.
Okay. This is, wait, this is the system, we will keep our decorum and we will sit and we will not talk out loud. You've had your minutes to speak, we respect your minutes to speak, we will continue to respect your minutes to speak. The next person is Mr. Sean Price.
I'm back.
Okay, sorry, you're ready?
Council, many me. We're the 19th largest city. But we're the seventh most dangerous. I didn't say that. That's stats. We talk about decorum. And we see what the punishment can do, can be for us, right, the citizens. Well, y'all have no, no punishment to you. We can get arrested, thrown in jail. Because of what the mayor says and orders. Turning our police into thugs and gang members, pushing us out of here. I say that because First Amendment means everything to me. I didn't do 23 years in the Army for it to be taken away because somebody doesn't like what somebody has to say up here. And our mayor has displayed a complete and absolute animus towards certain people in the public. And just because there are a few of us that disagree with that, it's taken punishment. And accusations made against me by this, this mayor and that city manager to the newspaper and it's published. I make no threat to the city council, other than my vote is mine and I will vote it accordingly. You're my city council. You represent me. You're my city council, you represent me, so what you do up there and what you say up there embarrasses me, and I take it to heart. So, when you go to put this sign up, make absolutely certain, if it violates my First Amendment right, I will see to it that civil action needs to take place, because we already have this at the Lions Club Center where you can't speak about political issues at any time that you enter the building. That's a violation of the First Amendment, clear and simple. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Price, for your comments. The next person will be Melissa Brown.
Bringing this up again, question was posed by the mayor earlier this evening, answer was not given by the city attorney, as to whether or not it is legal to limit any comments, citizen comments that are listed on our agenda anywhere, whether it's agenda items or non-agenda items, whether it's legal to not allow someone to speak just because they do not live within, live within the city limits of Colleen. The Open Meetings Act clearly says members of the public, and it was a very craftily worded response that the beginning part of that, that says it allows residents of Colleen comes from the governing standards. Hate to tell you, I've been up there in your seats, and I know that just because it's in our governing standards doesn't make it legal. From time to time, we have to go back and amend them to come into compliance with the law. There are people who have been waiting here for two meetings, it is now, been waiting over five hours to be able to come in and speak to you and address you, and there is the potential that they're not going to get that opportunity, one, because it was intentionally left off of an agenda at the earlier meeting, and two, because now, all of a sudden, this rule that was not here last week is here this week, saying you have to be a resident of the city of Colleen in order to address the council, it was never part of the motion. Can't show it to you in the governing standards, because the newest additions to the governing standards that include that are not uploaded yet to the internet, but you can go back and watch the video, and I know that you all voted on the same thing. You can play all of the rules of decorum you want, but when responses come back, telling citizens that they're ignorant, that they're wrong, they don't know what they're doing, that they're illiterate, all of the negative comments that I have heard come towards citizens from that diast, how do you think that reflects? Yes, it reflects not as great when a citizen comes up here and says something negative that's an opinion of a citizen. When a member of the council or city leadership sits on the diast and returns negative nasty remarks back to the citizens, that's where it gives an even worse look to our city. I know it's hard to, to sit there and be constrained about it, I do, but that's also the position that you're being put in, there has to be a give at some point, and the more that you tighten down on the citizens, the more you're going to see civil disobedience. When people feel that their rights are being taken away, that's what they do, because that's their only form of expression that's allowable now, is to sit in the audience and express civil disobedience. Many of you have talked about being familiar with the civil rights era, what was that all about? How did people get their rights, and how did they get them across civil disobedience?
Thank you very much for your comments, please have a safe trip home tonight.
One question for you.
Our next person will be Mr. Glenn Ellis.
One question, since it does say that the council can allow for extra time by a majority vote, I just have a quick question in relation to that.
Counsel, would you like to allow Mrs. Brown?
No.
Another minute.
Sorry.
No? 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 No.
Adams says yes.
Mrs. Brown, you have been denied the minute, thank you again for your comments tonight.
Clarification is needed for future speakers on whether or not they can speak, even if they don't live within the city limits according to the law.
Mrs. Brown, follow the rules, please. Mr. Glenn Ellis, thank you very much, sir. Good evening, you're up next, you have three minutes to make your public comments.
Good evening, Madam Mayor Protem Cobb.
Good evening, sir.
And council staff. I'm Glenn Ellis Jr., I was born and raised in this city. My father, sitting in the crowd, Glenn Ellis Sr., I'm here on his behalf. Just a little bit about my father, he's a collector, he has some items at his house. We have about nine acres off of Cunningham Road. One week after Thanksgiving, the City of Colleen sent code enforcement out to his property to abate one acre, without notice, without any, any tickets, so forth and so on. So I'm just here to let the city council and management know that I'm gonna help my dad abate this nine acres that he has left of property. I know city code enforcement said that it was gonna be half a million dollars, and the city council did not wanna foot the bill to take care of the abatement of that property, so I wanna let y'all know that we are in the process of cleaning it. My father has lived on the same property for forty years, and we have had not had any issues till 2021. My grandmother bought the property in the fifties, when my grandfather moved to Fort Hood, or Camp Hood back in the day, and fast forward to 2020, my grandmother's property was sold, and Dad was left with nine acres. Not until 2021, we didn't have any issues with code enforcement. And then, in 2022, code enforcement started harassing my dad after a certain council member moved to the area. Did any members of city council or city staff reach out to him to see how they could help him? They did not, but they sent him a ten-thousand-dollar bill in the mail for the abatement of the one acre. I think moving forward, the City of Colleen, we're growing, and there's gonna be more properties like this piece of land off of Cunningham Road, because it's inevitable. People have moved and lived here for fifty, sixty years, and y'all slammed my dad with a ten-thousand-dollar bill to clean up his property when no due diligence was done, and it's very frustrating that my father, who can barely walk, had code enforcement at his front door, throwing things away that, they might have been trashed to code enforcement, but they were things that.
Mr. Ellis, thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you, Ms. Cobb.
You're welcome. This completes.
Madam Mayor Protem, I know that we can only speak on factual items, but I will do a motion to a request, I have no clue what this matter is, if we could direct city staff to provide an update to council.
Councilman, Councilman Adams, we do hear you, and we meet your grievance. City manager Cagle has already mentioned that he would take a look into it. Again, this is a portion in which we allow our citizens to come in and to speak. We thank you for your comments tonight.
Yeah.
I have no form. I don't have anything. I'm sorry. Okay. Sir, I, I cannot hear your comments at this time, because it has to be from residents only of this area. Sir, I cannot without a form. Sir, I'm being fair, I'm being honest, and I'm, I'm doing what I need to do, because I do not have that information. Sir, I cannot allow you to speak, because one of the rules. Mrs. Anka, I didn't see your form also. I'm sorry, sir, but I have to follow the rules. Okay, can I get a, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Second, or second.
We have been, it has been properly, sir. So move.